The appointed hour having arrived and recognizing the presence of a core of our father's meeting of Forsyth City Council order, ask you to please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing. The invocation should be led by conference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray.
Good Lord, thank you so much for this time to come together as a group and do the business of the city of Forsyth. Lord, we pray for our city, we pray for our county, we pray for our state, and we pray for our nation. Lord, we just pray that tonight we do the business in the best interest of everyone here. Bless us and continue to bless us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. If you're all in attendance, we welcome you to our meeting tonight. My director reflect that all members of council are present either in the room or by Zoom, except for Councilman Howard right now, but I understand he will be going. He's Zooming, he's in now, so all members of council are present. And the next item on the agenda is a criminal of the agenda. I've not been aware of any changes that need to be made, so a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
So move.
A motion from Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Goolsby. Any discussion, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda that you are aware of? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and the agenda is so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 15th, 2020 council meeting and the March 29th, 2020 called council meeting. You should have been provided a copy in advance electronically, and a motion would be in order at this time. So a motion from Councilman Goolsby to approve, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Any additions, deletions, or corrections thereto? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and both sets of minutes are so approved. The next item on the agenda is approval to consider an application for the sale of alcoholic beverages of Grits LLC. City Attorney?
It's kind of advertised, it's been advertised, it's an application for license to sell alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor supporting license for John Richard Jones of 551 Grits LLC. The proposed location is at 17 West Johnston Street, number two U.S. Grits location. It's been advertised in Monroe County Reporter issues of March 24 and March 31, 2021, and I'm not aware of any questions about the application or the grant of a license for this location to this applicant.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion forthcoming?
So move.
A motion from Councilman Hewitt to approve the license, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Is there any discussion or are there any questions related to this motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and the license is so approved. The application for the license is so approved. I need to back up just a second. The agenda has, we were to approve the minutes from March 15th, 2020, and March 29th, 2020. That should be for 2021. By show of hands, does everybody agree that you were approving minutes for 2021 and not 20? Just so nobody will come back and say we didn't approve the right minutes. You were for 20?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll need to vote again. All right, so we're all on board with that. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a variance application of Forsyth Cable Net LLC. City Attorney?
Yes, I'm due for a public hearing. The application of Forsyth Cable Net LLC on behalf of the property owner, which is public service data. As for a variance on the property designated as tax parcel F-24039 at 35 South Lee Street, the variance is for a sign, a variance for an internally illuminated sign with a timer application. The current zoning of the property is Central Business District and zoning is not in question here. That won't be changed. The advertisement for dips is run in the necessary paper, issues of the Monroe County Reporter newspaper. This went to planning and zoning, I believe, at the February planning and zoning meeting, and I believe the recommendation was for approval of the variance.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The stage is set, and now we will open the floor for the public hearing. The public hearing on this matter is now open, and I'll call on the zoning officer, Ms. Pearson, to come forward. She has any remarks?
If this is Forsyth Cable Net.
Ms. Pearson, if you could come to this one, because I'll pick you up on the speaker.
Okay. One second, tell me. Forsyth Cable Net has asked for a sign variance because internally illuminated signs are not allowed in Central Business District. They're replacing the existing monument sign with an internally illuminated sign. The monument is still there, they're just replacing the top part of it, the advertisement part. They presented two different designs before the planning and zoning board, and the board chose sign example B. Sign B only illuminates the name, the whole sign is not illuminated. The board also asked that the sign be put on a timer so the sign will be cut off at 12:00 a.m. There was no set time, set cut on time requested. The variance was approved and the vote was unanimous. And if you do need a visual to be seen, we do have a flash drive if you want to see it.
Should be in the packet.
It's in the packet, but if you want to, if you need a bigger picture than this. Sorry.
It's the bottom one.
It's the bottom. Like I said, the monument was there, they're just replacing the top part, and it fits the standards for the sign.
All right. We are now in the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any in the audience who are here to speak in favor of the proposed variance? All right? Any in the audience to speak in opposition to the proposed variance? Are there any here to speak otherwise related to this variance? All right? If not, I recognize that there's one person in attendance that wishes to speak forward. Do you want to say anything? Or you can...
No, I'm just here to answer questions if there are any.
Okay. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in the public hearing portion of the meeting before we close the public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak? All right? Anyone going to ask? Recognizing no interest from the public on this matter, we will close the floor for the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, and it is for council's consideration, and a motion from the council is now in order.
How close have we approved all this request as written?
Councilman Stroud, moves that we approve. Is there a second?
Not second.
Second from Councilman Hewitt. All right? Is there any discussion or questions related to this variance request? If so, you have a representative of the public service here to answer the questions for you. All right? Any questions from the council? None? None, I'll call the question. All in favor? Record reflect, the motion carries unanimously and the variance request is granted. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a variance application of Edgar Houston Builder, Inc. City Attorney?
The application is for property designated as tax parcel 053014. The location frontage is on Johnson Lane. The variance application seeks allowance for a sidewalk on only one side of the streets in that development. Current zoning is residential moderate, hence the RM. The zoning is not questioned, zoning is not to be changed, but the variance is what's before you for the public hearing and council. It's been advertised in the Monroe County Reporter, the number of issues required, and I don't know if anybody here can speak, if there is or not. This went to planning and zoning at the February meeting. I'll let Ms. Pearson address that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. You should just say it.
I know, I know, I got one more. Edgar Houston Builders is asking for sidewalk variance in Julia Crossland. They are asking to only build sidewalks on one side of the street instead of both sides. In the subdivision ordinance says sidewalks shall be provided on both sides of each street and subdivisions in all zoning classifications, but a variance can be requested for only one side. They have included the flat showing where the single sidewalks will be placed. Majority of the planning and zoning board members said that since all the other subdivisions were required to have sidewalks on both sides, they did not see why they should not, they should not be required. There was also some concern about crossing the street to get to the other side if there were people walking, children in the street, crossing, and other. The vote was denied by the board, board of one.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Pearson. Go ahead.
I think this is phase one.
This is phase one, and this is...
Didn't Mr. Houston go before planning and zoning and get his flat approved?
Yes, so this would be, yes, so they are...
With two sidewalks and they built.
Yes, but they are requesting it for phase one and phase two.
I think the other side.
All right, Ms. Pearson. So at this time, we will open the floor for the public hearing. This is the time for the public hearing on this matter regarding Edgar Houston Builder, Inc. Are there any in the audience here to speak in favor of the proposed variance request? Any to speak in favor? If you'll just show my hand right now, we're just figuring out who's for and who's against. All right? All right? Are there any here to speak against the variance? Any here to speak against the variance? All right, we want to make sure we give equal time. Are there any here to speak otherwise related to this variance? All right, so what I read is we've got three people here that want to speak in favor of the variance not to have sidewalks on both sides. All right, we'll start with you. If you will, please just give your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Tyler Finley, 1896 Park Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31906. We are asking for the variance simply because we recognize that with rising construction costs, affordable housing is being a little bit more difficult to come by, and this is a step in the direction of being able to offer more affordable housing across the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Either one of y'all wants to speak, welcome to come forward. Just please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Ernest James. I'm new to the area, Monroe County, by way of Jones County in Macon. Glad to be here. Y'all have a good city, like to keep it that way. Edgar Homes, they have the sidewalks, and they're coming in with the phase two, I imagine, and I see sidewalks are there on one side of the street. I'm in phase one. Again, my address is 5339 Fellas Way. Fellas Way comes in on Victoria Street in, T-Bone is Fellas Way. On that end, we don't have any sidewalks as of yet, so I don't know if the phase, the plan is to put sidewalks in phase one or not, but I see in phase two on the backside of Conwell's, I believe, Conwell, I see they're doing sidewalks there. I didn't know anything about the two sidewalks deal versus one, so I don't know exactly where we are with it. But is there any other friends of Julia Crossland?
So are you in favor or...
I am in favor, but as of now, phase one, they haven't started any sidewalks, so I don't want, I want to know are they going to put any sidewalks in phase one? And so your car, if you got two cars, it's the back end of the car that's going to be on the sidewalk itself, so that's kind of a problem as it is.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly how they're going to do that. Yeah. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
That's my husband, so...
Okay. All right.
I should... I'm at 5339. Hello, everyone. I'm in favor of the sidewalks being that those that were on the, like he said, on the back end of it, there's no sidewalks in, like when you're walking, your pets or your kids, I'm out there walking, so I'm constantly jumping like this, like, is there a car coming behind me? Because I have to be in the street walking, and I feel like it's not safe. And I've never lived in a neighborhood where there was no sidewalks, so it was kind of strange to me that sidewalks weren't automatic or required. So it just makes me nervous walking in a neighborhood, because you're constantly having to look to see if someone's coming behind you so you can get out the way out of the street, and the streets are narrow as it is, so you already got to pull over to let another car go by, so, and it's a lot of kids in that neighborhood. So it kind of makes me nervous that the kids have to, if they walk, they got to walk in the street, and you know, kids don't pay attention to that often. They're not really alert as we are as adults, so they could be walking and be little in a car and I see them versus that they could be walking or playing on the sidewalk versus being in the street. It just kind of makes me really nervous.
So I have a choice, would you rather have two sidewalks or one?
I'd rather have two, but if I didn't...
Did you get your...
If I could only get one, it'd be satisfying, but two is favorable.
That's what it brings to a different side.
Even if it's taking away some of our property just to get a sidewalk, it's worth it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the proposed variance related to the sidewalk? Anyone at all? And since there was some opposition under our rules, I'm to allow the representative of the pros, if you want to respond, you want them to respond.
You know, I don't have anything indirect opposition to those guys. I certainly understand what their arguments are, so I certainly appreciate them bringing them to our attention as a builder. This is something we do. We build in six different markets currently across the southeast, and some of our markets we don't have sidewalks, several of the markets. We do have sidewalks on one side of the street, not both, so it's not, and our markets are rural markets, we're not Atlanta or big cities or anything like that. Obviously, but that is something that we currently do. We anticipate that being kind of the route for the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
So were there going to be one or two sidewalks?
I think, if I'm mistaken, that's kind of what we're here to determine.
That's what we're going to vote on in just a minute.
Yeah. There'll be at least one, so you guys will certainly get sidewalks, and if they say that, then we'll be doing two, except for these guys. Thank you.
Now, the request, the variance request was for just one.
Yes.
The requirement right now is for two. So we're seeing if the council votes in favor of the variance, then they're voting to allow one. If they vote against the variance, then they're voting to require two.
Yes.
Just to make it clear for everybody. All right? Anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken related to this matter that would like to do so? Anybody at all? All right? If not, we will close the floor of the public hearing. The public hearing will be considered closed at this point, except no more public comments, but it will be for council's consideration, and a motion is in order at this time.
May I have a public motion that would deny this?
Second, I have a motion from Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Dodd, to deny the variance request. Is there any discussion or are there any questions related to this matter at hand?
So why are we, why are these proposed that we deny the request?
Well, he agreed originally to build two sidewalks, and I think he'll do it, and that is our requirement.
Hey, I can understand that, but my question is, I don't live over there, but one thing I do want to see is, is there room for two sidewalks? If, you know, vehicles are going to have a hard time passing through or driving over sidewalks, whatever the case may be, I'd rather one sidewalk than no sidewalk. Once again, that's not my field of expertise, but if the rule permits it, I would rather see two, but if we can only get one over there, then that'd be fine as well. I think we talked about years ago trying to help Forsyth become a more walkable city, and I'm not sure of the lady's name, thank you for coming up, but I totally agree. You know, a lot of areas, Country Club, Wild Event on Stroud Street, we don't have sidewalks. And yeah, when I'm walking my dog, that is a problem, because I don't have a safe way to walk, so I totally agree with that. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Stroud. Any other comments? Councilman Howard?
Is there, is there something, I mean, I mean, I understand he agreed, I mean, is there like something in writing that we, that he agreed to, that we're going to hold him to, or is that just what he said personally? I mean, I'm just, that he wants to do two, but now he's not going to do one, but, you know, I'm just trying to look at the aspect of it. Is there anything in writing, I guess?
Yes, there are some construction plans that were approved, but as going through the construction plans, I noticed that the sidewalks weren't being put in, and so then I had to stop, and then I spent with them, and then that's when they asked that they just do one sidewalk, and they do have a plan, I think it's in your booklet, of where they would place the one sidewalk. So there were like 25 homes built with no sidewalks that they would have to put in.
So if I heard you correctly, there was, there is something in writing that he agreed to one sidewalk?
No, there's, no, the approval plans were for sidewalks on both sides, construction plans.
Okay. Okay, so then that, and that's what, that's what was approved and voted on that two sidewalks in, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And during this...
But then now that it's time before, there's a change, is that what we're saying?
Yes, they were requesting that they can just do one sidewalk instead of both sidewalks. And they...
Well, my thoughts would be, if that's the case, then I would say, if that's the request, why not take it to square one and have a discussion about why, you know, I mean, you know, I, you know, I'm just saying, because it was brought up with the approval of two, then it gets before us, and now, you know, now we have to be the one to say it's okay or it's not okay, but it was initially they come up, am I correct?
Yeah. Plan and zoning turned down.
Does that work again?
Oh, plan and zoning turned down.
They did turn it down?
Yeah.
They did turn it down?
Yes, they denied. Their recommendation was to, their recommendation was to deny to only have one sidewalk in the subdivision.
Okay, I got it. Okay. All right then, well, I'm done with meeting this, then, okay.
It's, and the ordinance, it's requested that you have two sidewalks, but you can request a variance to have one sidewalk, and so it's worded in there that you can request that.
All right. Any other questions or discussion related to this matter? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion to deny the variance application? All right. Are there any opposed to the motion to deny the variance application? Are there any abstentions to the vote? Councilman Lawrence, how did you vote? He muted, I can't hear him. Councilman Lawrence, I'm...
Okay, yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, I can hear you now. How did you vote on the motion? Did you vote for, against, or abstain?
No, I would like to say, I would like to see just one sidewalk, you know, but take the reason.
So you voted against the, against the motion, which was to deny the variance. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. Let the record, let the record reflect, there were five votes in favor of the motion to deny the variance. There was one vote in opposition to the motion to deny the variance. The motion is approved, and the variance is denied. All right. Next matter is a public hearing to consider a rezoning application of Integrity Development Partners LLC. City Attorney?
This is a request for rezoning with a conditional use approval. The property is near the intersection of Harold Park Parkway, Road Highway 18, and Industrial Park Drive, in the area behind Shawnee, to give somebody where it is. Integrity Development Partners LLC is the applicant, the owner of the property, it's several owners, but their primary owner, I believe, is Commissaro Enterprises, LP. They have requested that the property be rezoned, presently is manufacturing industrial, MI, and rezoned to highway business, HB, for proposed use to be developed as multifamily and with a 24-month conditional use approval to develop a multifamily complex in 24 months. The application was publicly advertised in the Monroe County Reporter newspaper under the data of the time, and before you for a public hearing on this. It's Monroe County Tax Parcel 054009B, and the whole track, I think, is comprised of about nine and a half acres, and this development is going to take about eight acres of that amount of land. And it's here for a public hearing, and good decision for council.
Okay. Ms. Pearson?
Thank you.
I'm going to repeat a little bit, because I have written out, as you have in your packet, Integrity Development Partners is asking for parcel number 054009B to be rezoned from manufacturing industry to highway business. The road frontage is on Industrial Park Drive and is located in the Monroe County Industrial Park. The parcel boarder is another property that is manufacturing, industrial, and highway business. Integrity Part Development Partners is also asking for a conditional use for residential multifamily. If approved, to be rezoned to highway business, residential multifamily is a conditional use in highway business, so that's why they're asking for the conditional use. They're requesting that the conditional use be for 24 months. Integrity Partners plans to build a 64-unit multifamily apartment community. Some of the planning and zoning board members had concerns about the location of the apartment community. It will be in the industrial park, so there will be semi-trucks traveling the main road, so they were concerned about the kids and school buses. Several questions were asked concerning what type of apartment community this will be. It will be like the Brentwood Apartments that is located on Brentwood Place in the city. Some of the qualification, qualifications guidelines have changed, but I feel the Integrity Partner Development Partners would do a better job explaining how the apartments will be priced and who would qualify. The rezoning and conditional use was approved with three, four, and two against.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on this matter. Are there any in the audience here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning application by Integrity Development Partners? All right. Recognizing that we have some to speak in favor, are there any to speak in opposition? Recognize we have some to speak in opposition. At this time, we will begin with those who are in favor of the project development, who may come forward at this time. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Red Homes, 4827 Twin Shadows, Augusta, Georgia. Thank you for hearing me out today on this. We have a small presentation just to further help educate what we, some of what we did at planning and zoning as well, so I'll load that up real quick. IDP is a multifamily developer, they talk about Augusta, Georgia. We do focus on affordable housing and workforce housing, mainly in non-major metro areas. The closest one to here would be Perry, Georgia, that we've done. And so we've, I've been doing this for 25 years all around the state of Georgia, as well as many others that border Georgia as well, and we'll try to walk through a little bit why we chose this site, talk about some of the concerns that planning and zoning had, and that we tried to address them. I'm sorry, I don't actually have a clicker, so I can't really control the slides, so I'll just have to say next until, until they can do that. So again, I won't bore you with all the details about IDP. I'm sure, I'm sure you've already looked this up. The project that we did in Pelham, Georgia, again, just to show you some of the work that we did. The project that we did in Pelham, Georgia, again, just to show you some of the work that we do and the quality of developments that we produce. This was an historic adaptive reuse. Uh, the following development, uh, is a property we're about to, uh, start with the partnership with, uh, Tiffton, City of Tiffton, uh, called Nine Oats. Here's just a sampling of some of the other properties, uh, that we've done. Again, the closest one being seventy-two units in Perry, Georgia, that is, uh, in the completion right now and, uh, almost fifty percent already leased up. Uh, we've worked in Ashburn, Camilla, Valdosta, Thomasville, to show you some of the communities that we're used to working with, kind of things to give you representation of, of what we do. Uh, we're very familiar with, with working in communities like Forsyth, I think is, is the biggest point. Uh, while Forsyth, uh, obviously you have a lot of local growth here, uh, being between, uh, Metro Atlanta and Macon on the interstate, we continue to think those are areas. A lot of what we develop is on, uh, up and down the interstates and major highways, uh, which we'll talk about here in a minute. Also, uh, we believe there's not enough workforce housing for what you need and it's continued to be a big need in all the communities that we work in. And, uh, the demand is, is unprecedented, especially in today's times, uh, with so many people being hit with loss of jobs and layoffs. So we're continuing to provide, um, affordable housing whenever we can. One of the things that we chose is, uh, we work through the Department of Community Affairs, uh, have a lot of relationships with them and they put out an annual competitive process to get passports which, uh, provide the, the demand or the, the financing for these particular type of developments. And so, and, and they give you scoring based upon education, access to, uh, services, the stability, previous projects have been done. So the state agencies and the governor signs off every year on what they call an allocation plan and they decide each year through the DCA Commissioner and the Governor and their staff and board, what's important to the state of Georgia and where they would like to see affordable housing built. And so they're based upon a number of attributes. I won't get into all those aspects unless you have some specific questions and, uh, we'll, we'll answer those at this time. But this particular census tract, uh, which we try to highlight here is the particular one in Monroe County in the city of Forsyth that would allow a deal to get funded. The other locations in the city of Forsyth and Monroe County would not get funded. So the city of Forsyth and Monroe County compete against other, um, non-metro areas around the state. So it would compete against, um, other communities. It would not compete against, uh, the city of Atlanta, uh, or Macon or Albany, but it would compete against the Dublin's of the world, the Grays of the world, those type of, of communities. So your community has to compete in the overall environment for the state, for these, these, uh, roughly twenty-five to thirty deals that are done every year. Uh, as you can see in census tract, and you guys know your community better than I do and you know what's in the area, uh, this is the only site that we could find that was not on the market for sale. Uh, we did reach out and track down the owner to see if he'd be willing to sell it. Um, we understand that, uh, what the area extends, we understand the traffic issues. We'll try to address those in a minute. But if you go back to that slide for me, please, if you know, you can see Highway forty-one is the one that runs up here along the, the side and Highway eighteen that runs into Macon goes, is the other highway. And this is the shaded areas in between of what that census tract is. So you know in that area that it's mostly, you start getting further away from amenities, you start getting away from services, um, and you get away from, you know, any place that could, uh, be practical for multifamily. So we found a site that actually worked. Um, and yes, we, we go out and we look for these sites and we do a lot of due diligence. We look all over the state, um, and we can only win one or two each year. A lot of developers will go out there too. So in this particular case, you have to have zoning in place and you have to have it before your application deadline is due. So we do go out there and work at that. Proposed site here, we believe is an appropriate site. Uh, yes, I understand it's next to industrial and we'll talk about traffic and all that here and then as well. But it is, it was specifically looked for, uh, in this particular eye, this particular tract. And then this was the only tract that we could find in parcel that could be developed for affordable housing, workforce development in the city of Forsyth or Monroe County. So this was not some random process that we went through. Uh, it was very strategic and very intentional. Go to the next slide. Traffic, we deal with traffic in a lot of cases. Uh, we followed traffic issue in Perry last year and we're doing a deal there. It's on Highway forty-one, which has a lot more traffic than we'll be talking about. So what we've done is we've gone out and just, again, this is an educational process for you as well. It's talked, pulled the, the latest DOT traffic information. And I believe all these are from twenty nineteen. So these are the traffic data points that the DOT has tracked to give you an idea of what the traffic counts are on, on these roads. Obviously, we're talking about Industrial Park, there is no DOT traffic information on that, on that road. Uh, you can safely assume that it's substantially less than the fifty-four ninety on Highway forty-one or the forty-eight thirty on Highway eighteen. And so we made the assumption that just roughly a third of those drivers that hit those, either one of those roads, uh, we add those together would come through Industrial Park. I think that is, uh, a extremely conservative number and I think it'd probably be substantially less than that. Here are all the data points, you know, there's a lot of on this slide here, but I'm only gonna point you to a couple items. The biggest one is looking at your top number two and number three of there, what types of traffic was going up and down those roads. And the specific one is we used the one on Highway eighteen, which was the closest spot, which would be the closest one to the entrance. You can see it right there on the left-hand side over there. It just passed, I think, where the new QuickTrip is going is where that site would be. Is over seventy, almost eighty percent of your traffic there on that road were passenger cars and pickup trucks. They were not semi trucks and tractor trailers. So I think that's a really important aspect. I know that has come up because of the area and the CDL allocation next door. If you look down here, less than probably ten percent of, of the, of the traffic on those roads is semi truck trailer. And so remember that as we continue to talk through the next couple of slides here, you can get an idea. Uh, we pulled up, uh, where Piedmont Hills was, Union, here, these are all in Forsyth, City of Forsyth, and found the closest data points there. Uh, Union Hill is fifty-one hundred, uh, Piedmont Hill has forty-seven hundred. Brentwood has on the six thousand, Forsyth Gardens has over seventy-seven hundred. Again, all substantially more than what the traffic would be on potentially on Industrial Park Boulevard. Here is a, a view of the one we're just finishing up in Forsyth. This is Highway forty-one. Uh, based upon the data reports there, over eighty-eight hundred vehicles cross out every day and it is a, a state highway right to the right here. And if you can see, there's the new entryway with the A cell and D cell lanes. And just to the left of that, you can see the roads, uh, which is Highway forty-one. Just up the road from us is a, is a elementary school. North of us, just to the south of us is a high school, if you're familiar with Perry, Georgia. Here's one in Valdosta, Georgia, um, on the way out to, uh, the military base. There's twenty-nine thousand cars that go down that road a day. Uh, you can see the entry right here on the left and you can see a double lane highway out here on, on the right with a median. To give you an idea of, of that this was a state highway as well, got the engine per, per cut just as we did in forty-one. So again, trying to put everything in perspective so people understand that what we're proposing here is not a, a novel concept or anything out of the ordinary. Here's another property here, again, believe it or not, we've got four properties on Highway forty-one running through the state of Georgia and north of Florida, um, and then forty-one's very close to us. This is the one we just finished, uh, you can see on the left-hand side right there, the entry to the facility. Uh, it is seventy-six units and it is on Highway forty-one and it has almost fifteen thousand cars a day. Uh, and right across the street from there is the issue and the hospital. So my point on that is we can talk a lot about the traffic and I believe traffic is a very important issue. All those things are, are, can be dealt with, uh, and we have dealt with those. This is again, not a new process, not a new issue. There are things we run across in every community. The one in Tiffton that we're doing is across the street from elementary school where they're building a YMCA and we actually partnered with the city to build sixty-four units there as well. So again, trying to keep everything in perspective, trying to keep everything in, in, in honest, straightforward, transparent manner so you can see. We have made a couple adjustments since our, uh, planning and zoning meeting as we continue to refine our plans. Originally we had eighty units and we are also, uh, we reduced those down to sixty-four units for a number of reasons. Uh, traffic really not being a driving factor on that, but it is obviously a factor that we believe is, is something that needs to be addressed. We also added more market rate units to the property as well that have no income limits on those particular properties. The other ones will have an income restriction on those. Here is the site plan, um, as you can see, uh, Industrial Park Boulevard, we actually have two ingresses and egresses off of that from feedback that we had with the city. So as buses would come in to pick up children, they'd also could drive in, park in front of the clubhouse booth was where we would have them meet and put a little bus stop sign there. And so the, the, the buses would not be stopping on Industrial Park Boulevard. They would be actually coming to the site, they could circle in and circle back out. So there would be no, uh, worries with the children waiting on the side of the road on Industrial Park Boulevard for a city school bus. Uh, the site is roughly seven, seven point three acres, believing roughly one point seven acres for a future development on the out parcel. Um, again, just a few items and you can get an idea of what some of the product looks like. Uh, that particular one is in, uh, Valdosta, Georgia, that is, uh, Freedom Heights. That was eighty-eight units on the Bemis Highway that headed, headed out to Moody with the largest camp that we had. And we do have a lot of families out there, a lot of air force and their lives and the children out there. So we, uh, we work very closely with the military on that. Um, we always do playgrounds, we always have accept, uh, accessible dumpsters. We work, work very closely, uh, and trying to meet the accessibility issues for handicapped and disabled people as well, so we work hard to that. Uh, on a property like this, we all, always do surveillance cameras. Uh, and a property this size, roughly, probably forty plus or minus, uh, surveillance cameras on the property. So, uh, we work very hard at making sure that, uh, anybody that comes on the property and there are issues that we do, we can, uh, track them down and work with the local department if we have issues. You can see the, the inside of an apartment community right there. Again, you can see the quality. I just feel like it's important for you guys to see who we are, what we're about, and the type of products that we do. Uh, we do provide all amenities in there, uh, with all the appropriate Energy Star appliances, ceiling fans, washer and dryer connections. Uh, here are just some of the examples of some amenities that we put. Uh, here's a playground, uh, that you can see, uh, picnic pavilions for them beside the playground. We've learned over the years, if you don't put a cover picnic pavilion beside the playground, the parents will not come in to watch the kids. So, uh, we try to make a picnic pavilion there where it's comfortable for the families and the parents to watch the kids and keep them supervised and hopefully, uh, make sure they do a good job and keeping their kids safe as well. I've said a lot, I'm sure y'all have, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer anything that we can. We'll be as transparent as possible and, uh, answer your questions as forthright and hopefully, uh, get your approval to your desire to want affordable housing in your community.
Any questions from the council at this time? What can I want?
I have a question about the traffic count. Did y'all take into consideration the track of trailer training crew there that has multiple trucks coming in and out of the day?
We do not have that data. Uh, we were unable to obtain that data. We did reach out to them but did not get a return phone call. We pulled the data that we did have.
Have you guys purchased this property yet?
We have not, necessarily.
And you, you said the funding is based on the zoning, right? So if you don't get the zoning, then you're not gonna get the funding for that project.
If we don't get the zoning, we will not be submitting this application, uh, to the Department of Community Affairs in the state for their review.
So has it or has it not presented, been presented?
Has not been presented. Our, our applications are due to the state, uh, in May. Um, and there'll be roughly seventy-five to a hundred applications that are submitted, uh, around the state and roughly twenty-five will be funded. And then the way they do it, there are different pools and where the metro Atlanta has their own pool this year, which is a little different, non-Atlanta MSAs will have their own pool and then all the rural, so the non-MSA or basically if you consider USDA type area will have their own pool this year. And so in order for us to submit our application, uh, you have to have zoning in place to do that. And with multifamily being a conditional use, uh, and working with the landowner and seller is to making sure, because highway businesses in front of, uh, currently zoned right there by the site, uh, we felt like a highway business would be in appropriate zoning and future use. Uh, and with multifamily being a conditional use, we needed to go and get that approval. And if we don't, then we will not be able to submit our application, uh, to the state and there will be no funding available.
Any other questions from the council? All right, we'll continue through then and if you need, you'll have an opportunity at the end. All right, any others here to speak in favor of, uh, the proposal by IDP? All right, are there any here to speak in opposition? All right, they come forward, just please announce your name and address and, uh...
Great Glen, and I own a business there at one fifteen Industrial Park Boulevard. Um, looking at your plans, uh, and the apartment complex actually looks great. I love the concept, love the idea. It does look really nice. Um, but I will still, will say that the location is not the right location at all. You've got a industrial park, you got a lot of commercial property all around it, zero residential around there. Um, I'm on the Monroe County Development Authority in that business park also. I can tell you, with my business being in there in and out, uh, well, first of all, speaking as the Development Authority member, I would not like to see any access into the industrial park. If you're gonna do access, it needs to be on eighteen, in, in my opinion, okay? Um, Monroe County Industrial Authority has that part there for commercial industrial and that access, that's what we designed that place to be, not residential or, um, multifamily dwelling, okay? Um, the, now speaking as a business owner, as a business owner in there, I see a lot of traffic, you know, you couldn't get that data. Lot of residents use that as a cut through, we all know that, okay? With also the truck training center there, the semi truck driving training center, those trucks move slow, very slow. They hold up a lot of traffic. Now, it gets five minutes down the road, they get to the stop sign, they sit there and wait too. So they'll block and I've already seen people stop blowing their horns, being irate with sixty-four units in there, sixty-four different families in there, trying to leave there, go to school and do other things that their livelihoods and things like that. With those trucks there in and out all day long training and they get out on the road and do this big loop around, uh, the county or the city here on down eighteen and the interstate. They put that there specifically for that training. If you put sixty-four dwelling units there, it's gonna impede a lot of people and a lot of traffic, okay? That's, it's obvious. Now, Purdue, um, they have probably sixty-plus trucks come out of their feed mill over there. When they turn around, that turn right there at the stop sign and come up Industrial Park, there's corn, it slugs roads all over that road, geese are there all the time, half the time. People slam on brakes for their animals too, okay? But what I'm getting at, there's a lot more truck traffic in there than y'all, than you think. Okay, that's why I say it's not the location. I love the concept, I love the idea and I do think it's needed, but the location is in the wrong place, okay? Also, when that train comes by, they stop there, uh, at least two times a day, a lot of times and block that railroad right there. Everybody backs up there, turns around, comes back out or cuts down that little side road beside the railroad tracks. And you'll see a sign from a homeowner there, "Drive like your kids live here." Half the people do it, okay? Maybe half, that's being nuts, I think. But what I'm saying is there's just a lot of traffic, there's a lot more semi trucks in there than you think. When I spoke to a cohort at Purdue, they told me sixty-plus trucks drive through there a day, okay? So I'm just saying that I don't think it's the right place for it. I like the concept, I like the, uh, apartments, they look great, okay? But it's just the wrong location for it, truly is the wrong location. We're trying to, with QuickTrip down there, coming across the street, um, I do see a lot more eateries coming in on that exit too. Um, I think there's a better use for that property than multifamily dwelling. Because everything that's around there is commercial industrial. It's sort of like going out in the county, trying to take one spot in the county and say, "I'd like to change this to commercial industrial" when everything else is around it is agricultural or residential. You have one little blue spot in the county. It's sort of, this is the same way. You have one little spot that's residential multifamily dwelling. It's just not the location of it when that whole park is designed on commercial industrial setting, so. But that's my thoughts and based on me working in Development Authority there on that board and, um, having my business there, there's a lot that goes on down that road, okay? So I urge you to not allow the multifamily dwelling be there, but obviously something else commercially should go there, absolutely, okay? else commercially should go there, absolutely, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
I'm Lee Willingham, and I'm a partner in Willingham Farms LLC. I'm in the middle of a cockpit transplant and it don't hit very well. And if you ask me questions, I couldn't answer them because I wouldn't know what to question was. So I'll ask my sons to speak for me.
I'm Richard Willingham. I'm at fifty-eight twenty Pine Brook Road, Sandy Springs, Georgia, three oh three two eight.
And Chris Willingham on six hundred Dantry Road, which is Highway eighteen, right there across from Industrial Park, across the bridge in Forsyth, Georgia.
Yeah, we've got some adjacent property there. And just FYI, we're not affiliated with, even though it's got a Willingham name on there, it's not affiliated with our family. So I want to make sure that's clear. And, and we don't think this is a good location as well as Greg for multifamily housing. And the main reason is because it's commercial property and there's a lot of liability there. Chris has some information on the trucks and, and we've actually got some petitions that have been signed by every business in that area and families and people that are around, surrounding that area. I understand there is convenience stores. I don't really call those grocery stores because you go in there and buy a loaf of bread, and you go to the grocery store and buy a loaf of bread, you're going to have people that aren't making that much money spending twice as much on buying groceries. I don't really think that's a good idea either. I think it's disconnected from the city. There are another exit away, there's really, you know, nothing out there but gas stations, commercial property, all the stuff that's in the Industrial Authority. You do have some restaurants there, a couple there. But we're against the intent to change the zoning, basically because we're against the intent to build a multifamily housing unit there. And the truck lanes, that's another thing that's coming up in the next several years that y'all know about. And they're going to direct traffic down eighteen. So that's going to add some more trucks on that road just because of the way they're designing. We're involved in that because they're taking some stuff from us, but we're involved with the DOT as they're building out that, the truck lanes there, so.
And some major, major truck exits getting there to Highway forty-one, coming through Forsyth and to get them into Forsyth. I did, I did some also, like Greg, I did some, taught everybody in the industrial park, got some eighteen-wheeler numbers. You got the Purdue numbers, and you would do that times too because it's that many trucks coming out, and then they got to come back and get reloaded. So, you know, you're looking at one hundred and twenty trucks a day coming in and out of the road, which is almost directly across from the apartments. Cement truck, you've got the cement trucks coming in and out of there. They've got ten trucks that haul in and out of there every day. The truck driving the school, they are, they are in and out of there twenty times a day. That's going in and coming out, but that's twenty guys learning how to drive eighteen-wheelers that are on the road where the kids could be. There's no, you know, there's no sidewalks out there on those roads. It's just too much traffic, a lot of cars, it's a cut through, just a lot, a lot of liability on these companies with, with, with the cars and all trying to pull out there with these big trucks pulling in and out of there. And the new truck lanes coming. And we just don't think it's a good, a good fit for a family complex. We think it should stay commercial or industrial. For, I think the nearest house would be a mile from there each direction. So, everything out there is commercial or industrial. And it is Highway eighteen, we don't have the numbers on Highway eighteen, but since 2019, they have, they have really, a lot more trucks have come, are coming in and out of there.
Forty-eight hundred of the traffic companies.
Yeah. And then on that cut through, just all those trucks coming in and out of what's already in there. And they've done, you know, still got room for some more businesses coming in there. So we just, we're just against the housing coming in there, the families coming in there. So, you know.
I have only one question for the gentleman. I'd like to know what the thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen-year-old kids are going to do from three o'clock until after, late afternoon here in an industrial park.
I think there's a lot of liability just putting in that environment. I wouldn't want to be in that environment at twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old because I know how I was. Good thing we had a lot of places to play, but I, I would just think there's a lot of liability in that area. And they're disconnected from town and disconnected from other people. So I just think it's a bad area.
Lot, lot, lot of places to run on, and it's maybe where they shouldn't be.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. I do like the concept, but I would like it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I think it'd be better somewhere else.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Is there anyone else in the attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes. Please state your name and address for the right.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Blake Morton. I live over on Constitution Drive off of Montpelier. I'm not a business owner. I, I don't have a vested interest in the industrial park. I'm just a citizen who saw a sign and thought it would be important for me to come voice my opinion. Looking at the presentation, I thought it was beautiful. I think that you're fulfilling our trying to fulfill a need that's necessary, especially in our, our city. Our city is, I happen to know some of the people who build houses around here only because I've recently bought a house here in the last couple of years. And I know that they are working eight days a week trying to get houses built because people want to live in this community. And you don't need to be able to find, buy a three hundred thousand dollar home to be part of this community. I agree with that. So I think what you're trying to provide, the service you're trying to provide is admirable and necessary. With that being said, looking at, because I, I like you, I don't own a business near there, but I do, Mr. Ginn, I believe you said it was, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Head. Okay, as, as he was saying, you know, a lot of residents use that as a cut through. I do, every day. I take my kids to daycare, I come up eighteen, I turn left, and I swing down through there. And I'll tell you from personal experience, you're exactly right. There's a train, you take that little dirt road that's bumpy. And while I understand that maybe, you know, from a statistical point of view, you may not look at those things, but those are things that would impact the daily lives of people who would live on that street. And I think that's why it's important that you noted that. I think that's an important thing to consider. But most importantly, and I don't think anybody's really spoken about this, I'm sure you've all considered it, is that while I'm sure you're very proud of your businesses and you should be, I myself wouldn't want to live in the middle of an industrial park. That's just me. You know, we should be able to, as a community, provide housing for those who, you know, don't have the financial stability to buy a three hundred thousand dollar home, but those people should be able to live in a neighborhood that they can be proud of. And it's difficult to say, you know, I'm proud of living in a place where I, I look at, you know, a cement factory and, and, you know, driving back trucks constantly, you know, there's a seven eleven right here. And not to disrespect those who do have to live in those situations, I just think it's, it's my job to give voice to those who aren't here to be heard and say that they should demand more if they're not. So that's, you know, there's, there's safety issues, there's traffic issues, but I wanted to add that because I think it's necessary to look at it from that perspective. But I think everybody else has said everything, so I'm not going to take any more time. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning application? All right. Is there anybody else that we missed that wanted to speak in favor? We will give an opportunity for you if you want to come back, since everybody has spoken either in favor or against, and maybe some questions were raised you want to address. We'll have an opportunity to do that.
Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me answer some of your questions, and I appreciate the concerns that have been raised here today. I wish I could say they were all new things I've not heard before in other places. Last year, we were working in a, in a location that was in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They didn't want multifamily apartments. So, you know, you can find something everywhere you go, so. And that wasn't very far from here either. And so, is this the best spot for, for our housing development? Well, maybe not. There are other places in the community. As you guys and I think the previous applicant talking about the zoning construction cost issues, here are very real issues, and providing affordable housing and how they get financed and how they get developed is, is such a disparity, not just in the city of Forsyth, but across our country. And so, yes, is this a perfect site for residential? Probably not. Is it a good site for people who need a quality place to live and they're not as concerned about maybe, you know, a little bit of traffic? It's a great place for them. A lot of places and people are struggling to make ends meet, can afford the communities. If you walk around and go to your other affordable communities, here in Forsyth, they're a hundred percent with a waiting list. And so I don't think they're as picky as maybe you may be in where you may want to live and how you want to live. These are people who are looking for quality affordable housing, a nice property that they feel secure and they feel protected and they feel appreciated. And so I think, you know, if you ever want affordable housing in your community, you're going to have to think outside the box a little bit more in that. So otherwise, you will not get affordable housing here in the community because it'll be very difficult. And unfortunately, with construction costs, what people can afford to pay in rent, there's such an economy, and it's everywhere we go, even some of the metro areas, construction is slowing to a halt. So while I believe there is a concern for the affordable housing and the low income people in Forsyth, I consider you to put yourself in their shoes to have something is better than nothing. And so, as it relates to the traffic, I hear that, but then I think, well, okay, if I'm the landowner of that property, well, if I want to put a business there or something else there, you're talking about sixty-four cars making maybe two or three trips a day. So you're not talking about adding very much. And the most I've heard, if I was super conservative, you might get five hundred cars a day. Well, that is substantially less than any other multifamily development. The majority of your single-family residential areas that, well, they pull out of their, of their street. So if you're going to start making that as, as your standard, then you will be halting a lot of future developments in your community. So I seriously have you consider what, you know, what steps you're taking, how you make your policy, and make sure if you're, you be consistent with it. If this is something that is a concern to you, then you will probably have concern with other developments, even on this particular property where they develop it. If they put another gas station or a hotel, a hotel, on average, you're going to be sixty to eighty rooms that would go in there. Is a hotel better? You know, so if you talk about traffic, you'll be getting just as much traffic or more traffic out of a hotel. Most businesses that would be along, on Highway eighteen, I bet you Shoney does a lot more traffic than that as well. So I hear the concerns and I appreciate the concerns of the, of the family, of the business folks in there, is I do ask you to, to consider yourself and the folks who do need housing, who do need quality affordable housing, and their location is, is probably less important than it may be to others. And they just want to know that they got a safe, secure, affordable housing that they can afford to live in. And so I think as most communities, you probably have a need here for that as well. So happy to answer any questions and continue to appreciate your feedback and input.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak either for and against, and the property owner or the developer has had a chance to respond. So at this time, we will close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed, and it is a matter for this council to consider. Any motions are now in order.
Move. We deny the rezoning.
So. We have a motion from Councilman Dye to deny the rezoning. It was seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Is there any discussion or are there any questions?
I can certainly understand why, you know, the location issue about, you know, where you're going to put it, but at the same time, you know, I think the gentleman is right. I mean, you don't, they don't have any options right here, but we do need about affordable housing. But I mean, I can't, I can't say that it's a great location, but I certainly don't want to say, you know, I don't want it either. So I'm, I'm, I'm in the middle here. I'm abstaining on this over here. That's just how I feel about it. I would love to be able to find a location for it. I don't know whether it would be done.
All right. Any other questions or discussion?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. One thing I'd like to say, you know, lately, you know, we're looking at development and making sure that we measure twice and cut once, you know, whenever we, whenever we develop things in our community. And like I said, I think this is a wonderful idea in a, in a really bad location. And, you know, at the, at the end of the day, you know, I work direct kind of across the street at Monroe kind of achievement. That train is a beast. That train alone is a beast. I could imagine, my, I have two sons, I have two sons that would be the perfect people to go into that location. But at the end of the day, I would want my granddaughter, who's two years old, to be living without an industrial park and an interstate. I just can't see that. But I, I, I promise you, I love the idea, I love the concept, but I do think that we owe our community a due diligence as far as trying to find a location to put a project like this way you're at.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that. I think integrity has a great concept. I think traffic, you know, there's always going to be traffic issues, and I don't think traffic is a big issue, and I agree with you on that. I think our industrial property is too valuable for what we need to help support our community. And I think Greg was spot on to say that. I just think it's a bad location. And I would encourage you to work with Tammy Pearson, our economic development position that we put in place a couple of years ago to help developers. I know developers want to come here and invest their time and their money in our community. And right now, we're having lots of things happening in the city of Forsyth, which is, which is great and awesome, and probably the number one priority is we need affordable housing for everyone. And the gentleman that spoke about three hundred thousand dollar homes was spot on. I just think that's a bad location. And I would argue with you that there's probably four or five other locations that I know of myself that would be better, and I'm not a developer, that with the help of Tammy, having the contacts and the other people, I think there's a, there's a way for you to do this project. I think it'd be an awesome project, and I think it'd be a great addition to Forsyth. Unfortunately, I think it's a bad location for that. But I would encourage you not to get discouraged and get in your car and leave whatever the outcome of the vote is, because I think there is some great opportunity around the city of Forsyth that would be a better fit. It's never going to be perfect, just like putting in a neighborhood, people are going to stand up and complain. There's a lot of undeveloped properties that touch the city of Forsyth, we're very fortunate for that, that has been in families for many decades, and people are now starting to loosen up some of that property, and they see the growth that's happening in the city. So I would encourage you, I'm going to vote against it, I'm going to vote in support of it because I think it's a bad location, but I would encourage you not to give up and to work with Tammy and the city. This one Forsyth plan that we have in Forsyth, we meet with developers and business owners from the beginning, because we probably know more about this city than someone coming from the outside, right? So we could tell you things that are pros and cons and goods and bads that would make your project a lot more successful than you finding a piece of property, get a pretty good deal on it, and then try to maximize your investment. And I get that as well, because that's why you're in the developing business. But I just say that to say I don't want you to be discouraged because I think it's an awesome project, and we really need it. We need more projects from affordable housing all the way up to million-dollar homes. I mean, you need, you need a flavor of all of that, and you got to get a nice, and then end up having to make that work. So I'll shut up now, but thank you.
All right. Are there any other discussion or questions from the council?
Okay, ma'am, council, I, I, I think it's, it's a wrong location. I really do. But the thing is, let, let us try to help to go, to find another area in and out there. But it's a great idea, a great idea, but it is a wrong location.
All right.
Thank you.
Any, any, any other discussion or questions? Here and now, I'll call the question all in favor of the motion, and the motion is to deny. The motion is to deny the rezoning. to deny, the motion is to deny the rezoning request. The record reflect, there are five votes in favor of the motion to deny. Mr. Howard has stated that he was going to abstain, so there will be five votes in favor of the motion to deny, and one abstention and no votes against, so the rezoning application request for Integrity Development Partners is denied. Thanks, gentlemen. All right, the next item on the agenda is a review, a request from Pelacano Construction for revised completion date of City Hall building, and we'll give you just a minute as the room's settling down, get started here. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. All right. Ms. Hall, you got this one?
Yes. I hope that you had a chance to look at the letter that I sent to you from Pelacano, along with my email, reviewing some of the issues that we have faced. You know that we have talked about this since back in February, that we did have a full extension that would be coming before you. We've approved a couple of extensions, so we're currently at an April 10 completion, substantial completion date. Michael is here to discuss tonight. For those of you that did not, were not able to make the walkthrough on Thursday, you will see in the email that I sent to you whether you decided to approve the full request that Pelacano is making tonight, if you take my recommendation to, let's look at this and do maybe half of that, and have Michael come back, the first meeting in May, and then begin the first meeting in June. What we'll do is set up a walkthrough again before those council meetings. So, we had a walkthrough at the end of March, we'll have a walkthrough the end of April, the end of May, just so you can see the progress that is being made, and that way you will know the progress before he comes to review, hopefully to say that we are not only on schedule, but maybe ahead of schedule, that you will at least be able to see when he comes back to review those. So, if, Michael, if you want to come and review with council the request for the extension, the reasonings behind that, and then I'm sure the council may have some questions for you.
Sure. And like I said, Michael Garrison, Vice President of Pelacano Construction. And as Ms. Janice said, we've submitted a, I've submitted a letter with our request. It does have some of the things that you've already seen as far as some of the weather delays that has already been presented to you and been approved. There are some, and also some changes from, some changes in scopes with some added modifications of work that have added days to the contract time. The other issue is we do have one pending issue that we're, that has a five-day extension that we're, we've submitted, we're waiting for an OAC meeting coming up to discuss that with the architectural firm and with Ms. Janice. That being said, from the letter, as you can see, we have, I have requested a new completion date, substantial completion date of June 22. We have, I've gone back and from day one, kind of put a numerous, the numerous delays that have happened during this project. That being said, I think the kind of the, if you've read through that, if you have any questions about those, I think kind of the one that sticks is that everybody kind of understands is we received this notice receipt on March 13 with 10 days to commence work, which puts our date of commencement at the same day that the state of Georgia issued the mandatory shelter in place. So, we kind of started out on a bad foot with that, and I've kind of, I've itemized a couple of issues that we've run into due to delays that that's caused. And one thing I didn't put any delay days for on there were any for materials and, which is our last, the last item on there, other items, any delays that we've had because of material backups from manufacturing plants shutting down during that spring/summer that had to get back on line, that this caused lead times and to really, really climb. I am very open to the concept of coming back monthly, bringing the tours. I'm glad that some of you got to go out and meet with Greg on the site and actually got to see the project and where it's at at this point. I will say there's, if anybody went exactly 30 days before now, they would understand that this project went from a very linear project to now branching out, and hopefully you can see that the progress is tenfold and as it will be each month. So, we're going to work hard to give you all the best quality we can and fast as we can, so, I will take any questions that I might have on that.
Any questions from the council?
Okay, you did say it, close the session, you're on the 22nd, you said.
June 22nd, yes, sir, that's 22nd question.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from the council?
I would just ask a couple of questions. One, I know that there's been a lot of delays, and I know COVID factored in, but wouldn't we have been able to forecast those before the last extension, when we extended to April and then April 10th and so forth? I mean, those delays were early on in the process, wouldn't you have known before, you know, this April, we were going to need to extend it now till June? It looks like those delays we could have been planning for a little bit earlier in the process.
Right. We, when we came back and had a, I believe it was in February, when we started discussions about the delays that we had, and this letter became, you know, I basically updated it for this meeting, you know, currently. Those dates that pushed us out so far contractually were, 95% were weather delays, with the other being just changes in the work. Even though we knew, you know, we never, we never, we had some, we had one or two weeks of downtime for our personnel internally to adjust and move our offices and go remote, but we never really officially closed this job down, unlike a lot of our projects had happened to them, which kept trying to dig in and move forward as fast as possible. I apologize that the, you know, that the forecast of that did not, you know, did not show earlier.
I remember back when we were first working this through, I said something to the architects about the weather, and they said, we've got grim weather days, so many for January on average, so many for February. I can imagine we may have had more than we normally do, but I can't imagine that it's been two or three months more than usual.
Right. And the weather delays, the contract calls for an average of two days a month, it's based off of data that, you know, yearly data. We've had, actually had 40, pardon, am I glasses? We've actually had 43 rain days. The contract only allow us to have a certain amount, which equals the 24 rain days. So, we've actually had 43 rain days, almost a month and a half, of delays, and what they consider a delay is anything that's over .10 amount rainfall. Well, one thing that does happen in a .10, it depends on when that .10 happens, if a crew's coming to the site in the morning and it comes a .10 event or so, that crew's gone for the day and you're not going to get them back. And so, that's a, to answer your question about that, there is built-in days in the contract. Those days would have been the difference of the 43 to 24, and I'm only, you know, in the weather delay side, we're only allowed to ask for 24 contractually.
And then the final point I would ask about is, it seemed to me like there were, there was a period of weeks, if not months, on the front end of the project where there was hardly any activity, and there were some, probably some nice weather days in rainy days, but there could have been some work done, in my observation, I'm not a construction guy, we got people around the table that are, but it just seems to me like there were some days squandered that were outside of the shelter in place, that were outside of the bad weather days where we maybe got a lot cleared, then the basement came, then there was a long lull, and then we finally started going vertical, and then like you said, now we've gone out, vertical and out, so it's substantial amount of progress, I agree with you, the last 30 days or so. And I just wonder if we grant an extension until June 22nd, do we continue at that same level of progress, or do we just say that in June 22nd, we come back and get another extension?
Right. No, sir. We're, and if any, and Ms. Janice and you as well probably, our superintendent and our workforce have been there every day to push this forward. I'd say probably the lull that you saw was the design, you know, us turning our design cementals into fabrication of the structural steel that had to come after the concrete, but since that structural steel has been on site, you know, we've had, we've had a workforce there every day, and but unfortunately, you know, it was almost, you know, it's a very one-on-top-of-the-other-type building that we couldn't just, you can't put 10 subs on there, you can't now, you couldn't then, and it's just caused those delays on there.
Okay. Those are all of my points.
Anybody else?
Well, I thought we scheduled to begin with was a little, I don't know if optimistic's the right word, I mean, it seemed almost undoable when it was presented, knowing the complications of building to building. Now, I know Janice and her team are ready to get out of boxes and into their home, but delays are real, weather delays are real, and I will say that, you know, trucking delays currently now, last two months in the industry that I'm currently working in, is a disaster. I mean, there are people just, you cannot get product, you know, you cannot get trucking, you cannot get, it's insanity really, the last two months. And I don't know how much that impacts this market a lot, but it is real, it's not just a make-believe thing. And I would argue that aside from Janice's discomfort, and I think the plan that she's proposing is probably a good one, and it's a good way to kind of work through it, and we can all kind of see where we're at. The hardest part of the project's going to be finishing it, but I'd rather us finish it and have a wonderful product, because we're going to be paying for this for a long time, versus us hammering you to say you got to be done next week, and then we, you know, you cut corners, you do whatever, and then we wind up with a subpar project. So, you know, I'm not for saying, oh, let's get them to the 22nd, and then you're back up here the 22nd saying, oh, it rained three days, and you know, vacation and whatever, and they say, no, we're in August, I don't want that either, but I think Janice and her team staying involved in it and doing what they're doing, I think it's a good plan to do what you're suggesting.
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is that in the email that I sent, said to, instead of approving to June the 22nd, that we approve half of that time, which would be 37 days, that would give a, an extension to May the 16th, and then Michael would come back on the May the 3rd council meeting to give a progress update. Maybe we're still looking at June then, I don't know, but you would know better than another 30 days, because like he said, every 30 days from now on is really going to make a difference. But instead of just approving now an additional, two months from now, truly a three months from that original start date, if we do half of the time that he's asking now, and then do another walkthrough the end of April, have Michael come back, the first meeting in May, and see where we are in progress, make sure that he continues, and his folks continue to work as diligently as they can, and hopefully we'll have everything and Michael will be looking at being in before June 22nd.
All right. Is there a motion from council?
Tell me.
Motion from Councilman Goolsby, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Is there any more discussion or are there any questions?
There is a nice 16.
Hearing none, I'll call the question.
I'll just have a thing, is that, I mean, A, that's not what you were looking for, but it's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress.
I mean, it gives you some relief, but it also keeps you on your toes too, right?
Right, I'm on my toes, either decision's going to keep me on my toes. It's in the best interest of both city and for Pelacano.
Well, we're right now looking at April 10th completion date, and I don't think that's going to happen.
Now, we can say May 16th. May 16th is, no, we don't believe that's going to happen either, before it comes out in the paper and they say we think it's going to happen. We don't think it's going to happen, we just extended it.
Same with my father.
Okay, till May 16th.
Okay. Got you, got you.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to extend till May 16th the substantial completion date in this project. Have motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Councilman Howard. Motion carries unanimously, so approved.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance on regulation of public panhandling, begging, and charitable or political solicitation. Political solicitation, right. All right, who's got this one?
Mr. Valdez.
Okay, I got you.
This is a new ordinance for you to consider, as you said, to regulate public panhandling, begging, and charitable or political solicitation. I won't add a to worry about that. The proposed ordinance will provide four regulations, which we really don't have in the city now, will provide penalties for violations, and it's been on the books, it's been advertised in the March 24, March 31 issues of the reporter, come back for public hearing on the ordinance, and it is an ordinance, it's going to be held until the next, it's set an effective date, which could be tonight, I think the chief may have a lot of input into this, and I think that sets the table for you.
All right, chief, did you want to say something before we get started? Good evening.
Good evening, chief. We just want to get this implemented. We don't have a major problem with panhandling, we do get some calls, people begging for money, food. I just want to have a city ordinance in place, just in case we get out of hand, but like I said, we don't have a major problem with panhandling, but I just think we need to have one in place, just in case.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, at this time, we'll open the floor for the public hearing. The public hearing on this proposed ordinance is now open. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? All right, anyone wishing to speak at all related to this ordinance? All right. Recognizing no interest from the public, once again, anyone wanting to speak on this at all before we close the public hearing? Recognizing no interest, we will close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed, and this is for council's consideration. Any motion will be in order at this time. Councilman Hewitt, motion, seconded by Councilman Goolsby. Councilman Goolsby begs to second, but I don't know if y'all read it, we might not be able to politic anywhere. We got a motion and a second, we got a motion and a second to approve the begging, panhandling, and charitable, and political solicitation. Any discussion related to this ordinance?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
And so, so there are some, I'm saying something that we do need, that I totally agree, but when I read through it, I saw some of the things, for example, I did, I did see the political thing the first time, whereas on page 6, it talks about election activity, that the council may designate other five days a year on which these prohibitions shall not apply. which these prohibitions shall not apply, and for to affect it, to allow effective political communication, in connection with local, state, and federal elections. I don't really understand that. I also don't understand, how is this going to affect people who may be solicit for things outside of Walmart, for example, the Girl Scouts, when they're doing their cooking? Um, that's, I mean, I just don't understand. And last thing I have, you know, other than that Walmart, um, drive, I can't remember the name of that, they just rustle, um, other than that one area, you know, and, and we live in major streets on here. Oh, also, um, we're talking about bus stops on here. We don't have a bus stop in Forsyth. Can't remember what page it's on. I want to say by page three or four, but we're talking about bus stops. So I just want to make sure that, that we don't cut out these organizations who are trying to get charitable donations, because it was very specific on what could, it could not be done, also due to give some clarification on the election and what we can authorize. That's all I have.
All right. Chief, did you want to respond?
As far as the, um, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts selling cookies at Walmart, that's not going to have an effect on this city ordinance, because it's private property. So we, we can't, we can't enforce that if we wanted to, because it don't private property. Anything on private property, uh, it won't affect this city ordinance. But if they in the streets of Forsyth, Georgia, that's when we can, uh, enforce this, uh, city ordinance.
All right. Did I clear it up?
Yeah, I might want to add something too. What we're talking about, chief, we probably agree with this, I hope. We're talking about aggressive people coming up and harassing people.
Correct.
On the street, or money, or, or any of these situations. Uh, I don't think the Girl Scouts are in that situation, they're harassing people. They just, they don't have enough cookies to sell, so that is not going to be in that situation. Uh, the, uh, I think, when you look deadness in the definition on page two, aggressive begging, panhandling, solicitation, confronting someone in a way that would cause a reasonable person to fear bodily harm. If you're, uh, if you're at, uh, an ATM, and somebody comes up to your car, and says, uh, in, in the dark, and then comes up running up to your car, that might be considered some aggression.
Correct.
Uh, if it's your best friend, and he comes up to your car, that wouldn't be, uh, but, so.
Might be was asked for.
Probably not a good way to campaign either.
No.
Too aggressively.
Yeah. So, I think the key to that is, is aggressive, is, is, uh, uh, bothering people with no reason to do that. Touching someone without his or her consent, that could be even more than just, uh, panhandling, that could probably be, uh,
That doesn't really matter.
So, you've got other things here. But this gives the city police, uh, some, uh, some authority to handle some of these situations.
All right.
I just want to put those things out of, chief, if that helps.
Thank you, chief, and, uh, turning bell. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, but we did ask you a question about the election activity that, that we can authorize.
Right. That five days there, that, that, are we going to?
Did you want to answer that one?
We got this, uh, this was a format that you, you had got from another source.
Right, right. And on the campaign, five, five days.
Well, on the public, on the public property, public property. So you can go, that's on public property there again. Yeah, you could still stand on the.
In Greg's driveway.
Yeah. You see a lot of people in Greg's driveway. A good place.
Oh, yeah. He wants a bread.
Does that? Any more clarification, Councilman Schrahl? Hold that one.
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I feel it on understanding, um, you know, I just, I, I mean, I just don't understand it. And I think generally for, for, for clarification, I'm looking at page six, uh, subparagraph two, I think you, and the only thing I'm saying is that in the political climate that we're in now, when everybody's looking for, you know, that, that, that loophole or whatever, you know, I, I just, I don't understand election activity, and the council may designate under five days a year, so forth and so on. You know, to me, that period's vague, and if it could be made a little cleaner, I would totally, I'm not saying that, and I would go along with it. But other than that, I would, that's, I don't think I thought you understood.
Why, two, that's, and option, and option, if y'all are unsettled about that, is you could just take that part out altogether, passing without it.
I was just going to say, if, if you want to take it out, I mean, you can take that section out. I mean, if you're not.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table. If y'all defeat this motion, then you can make another motion, take it out.
It's not a court.
Or you can amend this motion. We have more options. Thank you, chief. All right.
And so you understand what, what we do anytime we bring a new ordinance, um, a completely new ordinance to you. We, we don't reinvent the wheel. We get several, um, variations from other CDs, and the others that we receive, they have this information in there. That's why we left that in there, um, for you guys to look at, approve, deny, make any changes, uh, so that, so you understand, it, it's not that the police department said, hey, let's put something in here about the political activities. That was just included in the other examples that we got, so that's why we left that in there.
Well, the question is, is, uh, is, counsel, well, you have to designate those five days every year.
According to this ordinance, I think that's right.
You can.
You can designate. You don't have to, but they don't have to be five days either. They can be none, or one, or four, any number up to five.
Or you can just ignore it.
Why don't we, why don't we strike out to it?
Paragraph two.
I'd like to make the motion that we straighten page six, paragraph three, subparagraph two, that talks about election activity.
All right.
Right, from the order.
There's a motion to amend the motion on the floor to, uh, remove.
I'll second.
Okay, you got it on. All right. And we have a second from Councilman Dodd on the amendment. All right. Is there any more discussion related to the amendment? And the amendment deals with striking, page six, paragraph three, subparagraph two.
And, who went back those, these next, next couple sections, we'll be just reading them down.
And we will renumber according. Okay. All right. So we will vote first on the amendment to the motion. This is on whether you want to strike, uh, that paragraph. All in favor of the amendment to the motion? All right, Councilman Lawrence. All right, all in favor. Unanimous. The motion is now amended, so when you vote on the original motion, you will vote on it without that section in there. All right. All in favor of approving the initial motion now, as amended? All right. Motion carries unanimously, and so approved. I have stricken that paragraph, and I'm going to sign it, with that paragraph having been stricken, and struck too. All right, there we go on that one. All right. The next item on the agenda is a code enforcement review by Officer Jeremy Malone. Officer Malone. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Sure. So, I'm Officer Malone. I, uh, I apologize. I don't mind passing.
I wear the glasses.
Um, uh, failure on my part. I, I failed to communicate some information. I was supposed to get this to you about a week ago, but I, uh, I didn't get it out to you, because I didn't, uh, tell people.
Now your hands were blind.
That is also my next apology. You made me a magnifying glass to read this. Um, the, uh, the information in this packet here is basically, um, a new way of keeping up with the properties, uh, that I'm, that I'm working on. So as you go through the packet, um, that I know, I know that you guys cannot see it, uh, I don't, I didn't give it to you in time. Apologize again. Uh, but as you go through it, it'll go over the properties, and vehicles, and sanitation, and grass that I'm working on currently, and then, uh, and also unsafe signs. And once you get through that, then you'll get to the back section, the back four pages, which are going to be the completed ones. Um, and this packet is not complete and full. I just, uh, I just, a couple of weeks ago, started putting this together into a, an Excel sheet, so that I can help keep up with the numbers that I'm working on. Um, the, the, the filing cabinet is getting full, and, uh, it's, it's much harder to keep up with. Um, so, I'm putting everything into an Excel sheet. So this is not everything, but this is the majority of what I've gotten done or, or I'm working on currently. Uh, at this time, I have forty properties that, uh, that are actually in the works of being fixed or repaired, or even torn down. So.
Forty properties?
Forty, forty, um, properties, yes, sir. Houses, um, that, that mainly, uh, pertains to the actual houses, um, that are damaged or in bad disrepair. Uh, the next page is, goes into the vehicles. I only have ten vehicles listed on that right now, but there's more, uh, probably closer to thirty that I'm working on. Um, sanitation, there are, there's one on here, there's probably a couple more onto that. Grass, I got one on here, there's a few more than that. Uh, unsafe signs. I'm still checking the areas. I think I was told about one a couple of weeks ago, I haven't got a chance to look at yet, but, uh, but the one I did have to deal with has been repaired. And, uh, those, uh, yeah, so that's pretty much it as far as that goes. But the rest of them are completed on the back pages. Um, but I understand there are some questions about some of the things we're doing. I would love to try to maybe clarify, or shine some light on it.
All right. And we can get these emails to the other council members that aren't here.
Yes.
The only other email I see you guys, that you can actually.
Read it? Yes. Uh, when I did that, it took it on to several pages, and I was like, how do I make this happen on one page? But I, I will get better.
All right. Any questions for Officer Malone? I know he may have some questions, what he's working on?
Good job, good job.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you for your report.
Oh, no problem.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of an engineering contract for water and sewer plant upgrade projected, project associated with USDA model.
You will remember at the call meeting, uh, we approved the letter of conditions with USDA. A part of that approval, uh, you will see in your packet, I've, I've, um, provided you with four different sheets. There are two sheets that deal with water, and two sheets that deal with sewer. Um, as mentioned during that call meeting, uh, the gentleman, Mr. Stanek from the USDA, mentioned that he would need two separate contracts from, uh, Hofstadter and Associates, for, um, for council to approve, and, um, those were presented. There's four copies of those that will need to be assigned once you approve this. Um, and just so you, you understand, uh, the water. The water total is a little over one point eight million for the engineering inside, and then the sewer for engineering is a little over, uh, one point seven, or right at one point eight. The total of the two together is three million, six hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten. You'll remember that Mr. Hofstadter said that we will need some interim financing, and the interim financing will be for this three million dollars to do the engineering. I know there's been a, a couple of questions since that call meeting last week. Um, we're, we're still waiting on the updated rate schedule. You know, we've been waiting on that, and working with the electric CDs, um, for about two years now. Uh, I have not received an updated timeframe from them. They do have all the information now that they have requested. Uh, so, um, we need to approve the agreement. I don't know if you want to approve the agreements with Hofstadter before we have those rate schedules, because again, I do not know how much longer it's going to take for electric CDs to get those rate schedules to us. They're not just looking at water and sewer, they are looking at electric. Uh, as soon as I know how much longer they're going to need on that, I can certainly let you know. Uh, but this was part of the approval, and part of the thirty million dollar project that you approved at the call meeting. And I'm, I'm assuming that maybe you guys want to have a work session to walk through, talk through this, have, um, Carl to come back and, and talk about the, the project again. Um, I will remind you that he did come to the retreat in two thousand nineteen, or eighteen? Two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, one of the retreats in, in Atlanta, uh, that he came in and reviewed the project. So, um, this is, this is for you for the approval of the water and the sewer engineering agreements, and as I stated, that is a little over three point six million dollars.
Would it, would it make sense to, you need it approved tonight?
In order for him to, to continue working, because Carl has been working on this several years, we do have a meeting on Wednesday to, um, begin the design and discussion on dredging the reservoir, because that is the first thing that, that he will do. Um, I, I think that really you guys are just wanting more of an understanding as to how all of this is going to flow, not so much that you're going to decide not to do this.
Right.
Um, so yes, we do need approval for that. Um, and then it would probably make more sense to wait until I know that we're going to have those rates, for us to have a work session to talk through the, the specifics of the, the project and the funding.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little more discuss, a little more information on, obviously we're going to do the project, and we need to do the project, but we need to really understand how we're going to pay for it, and over the next period of time.
For you.
Right, so.
None of us is big here.
I'm not going to be paying for it, I mean. So I'll recommend, uh, a work session or something to kind of help get us all up to speed, knowing that the actual project is element, I talked, two years, but engineering is going to start now. It's already started.
It will take two years to do the engineering and design. Um, that's, that was the second that he made, well, he said eighteen months, when, um, Mr. Stanek asked him about how long he needed it, and he said eighteen months. So it'll take eighteen months to do the design, uh, get all of the specifications written before any, anything starts, just engineering or what, will take almost two years.
All right. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Goolsby. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, and so approved. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of documents and costs associated with customer choice for QuickTrip.
You want to know that, um, I mentioned to you that even though QuickTrip is in our electric territory, uh, in our corner right, um, Central Georgia EMC has a service line, a distribution line, that runs down the side of the property that QuickTrip is purchasing or has purchased. Uh, so this became a choice load, or a choice customer, not based on load, but based on line location. And, uh, so we had to, to bid on this, so the documents that, that will need approval will be documents between the CD and QuickTrip, and, uh, electro, Central Georgia EMC, and the, the costs associated with that.
All right. Is there a motion from the council?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, and so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval to schedule fireworks events on July third, two thousand twenty-one.
We had previously talked about fireworks, and about any of the events that we're going to hold. Uh, one of the statements that, that you guys have made was that maybe the, um, Fourth of July fireworks, which we actually have in July quarter, um, would be our first main event. Of course, since then, we have approved, uh, with the street closure, the precipitate festival. Tammy had spoken with the, uh, Tammy had spoken with the contractor that we use for the fireworks, and he agreed to hold, um, our, our agreement until April. But we do need to let him know whether or not we are moving forward with the fireworks. Uh, we don't have to decide at this time, uh, if we're going to have food vendors, what else we're going to have with it. But we do need to go ahead and, and get a contract approved with the, the vendor if we're going to hold those. with the, the vendor if we're going to hold those fireworks on July the third.
All right, is there a motion?
Salute.
Motion from Councilman Dodd, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded from Councilman Hewitt, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously and so approved. The next item on the agenda is approval to discontinue curbside pickup parking.
In May of last year, uh, what before you and you approved to order signs, uh, each of the restaurants downtown and you say that pharmacy, uh, were offered two signs each that were purchased and put out by the city of Precy. Uh, there are six businesses that participated in that. Uh, the motion that we made in May was to, uh, approve this for the end of two thousand twenty, while the, uh, the pandemic and the, the shutdown of most of the businesses continued after then, and so we have left those signs out. Uh, just so that you are aware, and, and I'm bringing it back to you for, for you to, to say yes or no, um, but the majority of the businesses have all opened back up. Uh, there are other businesses that are open at this time that were not open, uh, when, when we allowed this last year. Uh, there've been, uh, several complaints that have been made about those signs, and so I would like your permission to, um, pick up those signs and no longer allow those designated, uh, pickup parking, um, parking spaces.
All right, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Stroud, is that a second, Councilman Howard? Seconded by Councilman Howard, any discussion or questions?
The complaints that you get, they've been, who are the complaints coming from?
I've had complaints from businesses that have the signs out, that, um, people are parking in them and that they're not coming to pick up food. Uh, the police department has had a couple of people that have called them because people are parked there. But then I've had complaints from several other businesses that, um, have said, if, if I had a designated parking space, I could go out and if someone wanted to sign up for insurance, I could take the paperwork out to them, they can sign that they never have to get out of their vehicle. And in addition, they have not said anything, but just so that you are aware, we have two additional restaurants on this square now that we're not there, but this was approved and we do not have designated pickup parking places for them. Uh, but they're, they're.
And I want to speak, uh, I want to speak on behalf of Congressman Paul Mead, and this guy was a bit of an issue. I mean, he's got, we already took away one side of the street. I mean, you know, and then now the school, the people, what he does have, like he told me, he has to come north extra early just so he can be able to park in front of his business or even close to it, but not only that, you've got fingers who can still go to him and get a haircut, and they got to try to cross the street from wherever they can cross it from, in most cases, because they can't park them. Like you said, and I agree with you, that if other businesses have, uh, a couple of designated spots, then why can't I have a couple of spots? And I agree with him on that. So I mean, I, I, I spoke on the dance about it, you know, so, and, and like you said, you know, I mean, the square is, is, is full. I mean, it's a lot going on Friday, Saturday night, no problems there. I mean, you can go if you don't, if you want to. If you don't want to, you don't have to go, but there's really not a whole lot of curbsides going on anymore. Everybody's going in, sitting down, eating, and they have a great time. But I, I don't see a need for it anymore, and, and, and on top of that, there's other businesses that don't have the same curbs. But I mean, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm going to pick it up and just go make the way it was.
And, and, and I agree with Councilman Howard on that one. Um, I'm a customer at Target Barbershop, um, and, and, and the same, I mean, his customers have almost fight for parking, um, and, you know, like, he, like, he didn't have a reserved parking spot. I would also say that Mr. Ralph Thag, um, sent me a letter, I'm not sure if he sent his resume or letter about parking on the square as well. So it is an issue, and I totally agree with it, we're not opening back up, I don't really see the need for it anymore. It's a good thing to have, but it's not a need anymore.
All right. Any other discussion or questions related to this motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously and so approved. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the two thousand twenty MEAG year end settlement.
This comes for you, uh, every year, this one for the MEAG two thousand twenty year end settlement, um, our portion of the, um, twenty-seven million dollars that MEAG is sending out for year end settlements, our portion is two hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and I recommend that we put that in the municipal competitive trust flexible operating account intermediate extended from security portfolio.
All right, who wants to make the motion and repeat that back exactly?
Salute.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Goolsbee, I didn't hear that extended, yeah, whatever. Seconded by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion or questions related to this vote?
Uh, just one question, this is the count we can get to, right?
It takes, if we request money out of this fund, they say that, you know, it may take up to thirty days for us to get the money. The short term portfolio is the one that we can request and have it within twenty-four hours, but this is still part of the short term.
No problem, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved, and I have just signed it, we'll call it through the folder. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of the two thousand twenty MEAG telecom project year end settlement.
Uh, this is the same, the, uh, annual, um, MEAG telecom, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars, and our share of that is one thousand seventeen dollars, and I recommend that we put this into the same flexible operating account that we extended from security portfolio.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll.
This, this, we're trying to get it right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously and so approved, all right, that one too is signed, in the folder. All right, the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Hopefully you had a chance to review that, I just want to hit several of the items. Uh, we are having, our GMA and National League of Cities is having weekly meetings regarding the American Rescue Plan. Uh, the last estimate that was given for Precy is that we will be eligible for a little over one point three billion dollars, uh, that will be given out in, um, two sections, and those funds will have to be extended, expended before the end of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, there is an application process, all of that is still being worked on, but the early information shows that this could specifically be used for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Uh, the other thing in the report, um, we would like to move forward, I don't need a motion on this, probably just a consensus so that we can write something and bring it back to you, but I didn't want to work on it too much if you were not in favor of it. Um, and Mr. Melton might can answer some questions more than, than what I have. So to amend the alcohol ordinance, to remove the reference to the distance for, for parks for liquor, our C ordinance does not speak to the distance from parks for beer or wine, and the state law does not. The only place that it is referenced is, um, for liquor, and so we would like to move forward with removing that from the ordinance if there is no opposition to that.
Anybody opposed to moving forward with that? A vote tonight, just wanted to, to ask them to move forward, all right?
Okay, we'll work on that. Um, the traffic calming policy, if you remember that, uh, the solar street signs, uh, in order to truly do that the way that, that we need to do the, the monitoring when a, um, street where the, the neighbors ask for, uh, their street to be monitored, we really need to monitor, uh, traffic in both directions. So in order to do that, we would have to use both of the solar signs that we have on one street. We're having a lot of people that are saying, uh, we can just put a sign over on our street to monitor, as we've done for several years. Um, we can't do that if we're going to use both of those signs in the one location that we're monitoring for the traffic calming. In order to do this and do it properly, we would be able to, to, to monitor two sections of town at the same time, if we bought another set, um, we did not budget for a set, but, um, we could find the money in the budget, uh, to purchase that if there's no opposition to us and then we'll, we'll have to bring back the requisition and everything to, to order another set. They're about eight thousand dollars, the last set was fifty-five hundred dollars, but that included a two thousand dollar discount because we turned in the, um, the old ones that we had. Um, if, if you guys are okay with that, then we'll move forward with getting the accurate pricing and bringing that forward for you for requisition.
Do we need to approve the census over five thousand, or you just want to?
Well, we'll have to get the, the exact pricing and do a requisition, so we'll bring it back, um, if everybody's okay with it.
All right, anybody opposed?
Uh, because they're monitoring, they're running Vets' Run right now, it's only going into, so not really getting those people speeding from the intersection miles going out.
Well, and we've, we've had a lot of complaints, um, you know, we've had Main Street, uh, East Main Street, and we've had Jones Street. Um, the monitoring on East Main Street, um, it, it showed that, I mean, there were, there, yes, there were a couple of speakers. Um, I was very, very surprised at the number of vehicles on Jones Street, um, hundreds of vehicles a day on Jones Street. And, um, there, there, there's a, there's a, a large number of people that are going above the speed limit on Jones Street. Uh, and it's, it's a very, a very curvy road, but in order to be able to, to truly monitor, we really need to monitor it from both directions.
And why are they on Jones Street?
Want to come to that, that.
By Spanky's funeral home, runs over.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's, that's. That street has houses on, so they're very close to the street.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I would hear from speaking with traffic, fifteen.
And, and some of them, they speed right there in that curve.
I don't hear.
She is gone, but one of the things that, that he and I have talked about is, is several other chiefs that he has spoken with, that, um, the, the vehicles, especially the, the chargers that are going from town to town, that are just doing, they're cruising around, um, they really like those speed bumps and speed bumps that are being put in, uh, because they slow down, go lower, and then they, they, they speed up, they lean up.
So that's good control.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll look at it, we'll look at that and see what kind of pricing we can get on that. Um, the conferences for MEAG and GMA, uh, the information has not been received, but it looks like both of them are going to have, uh, conferences. Uh, it looks like GMA is going to schedule theirs for August, as soon as that information comes in, we will, uh, let you know. Uh, there's been, uh, a lot of discussion about, um, penalty and senior citizen discounts. Um, I, I asked G to contact ten cities, and we use ten cities of various sizes, um, locations, populations. Of those ten, there's only one of those ten, um, that actually provided a senior citizen discount, and their requirement is similar to ours, except for that we have age sixty-five and they have an age sixty-two, but, uh, they do as age sixty-two for anybody that is on social security or a, um, fixed retirement benefit. Ours is age sixty-five with a household income of fifteen thousand or less, um, and, and they would, they, they would, um, qualify for the ten dollar base fee. Uh, the other part of it is we ask if anyone did a penalty waiver, there were three other cities that do a penalty waiver, if they're sixty-five and on social security, but of course they must pay their bill by that disconnect date. I say on that to say with, with us looking at the rates, if, um, my recommendation is that we do not do anything at this time, that we have to look at that when we're looking at the rates. Um, I know there's been, um, a lot of question about this, but just, there's, other cities are not doing, um, a senior citizen discount, but maybe when we look at the rate and, and we have a new rate and new tax rate, maybe that's something that we look at at that time.
Can I comment on that? Cause I, cause I talked to you about some of this too, so just so council will know kind of my thoughts on, on the thing. So somebody had called me and their issue was that they get a penalty every month because they, they get a social security check, and the timing of their check is such that they're always two or three or five days late paying their bill. So they're on a fixed income anyway, and then they have to pay a penalty because they're late every month, but they know it's, I mean, but it's, but it's, uh, something that's foreseeable. And what they were asking is could we offer the ability for them to select their due date? Some electric companies, phone companies and places allow you to select, you want to pay it on the fifteenth, you pay on the fifteenth. You can't change it every month, but you change it once a year, you're saying, I'm going to pay on the fifteenth every month. So that's what we were exploring, but I think we've got some technical limitations. Is that right, Ms. Hall? And that not everybody has a meter that we can remote, remotely turn on and off and so forth, and that would be one of the, or remotely read. And so they have routes now, so we have two days that we bill on and you have, and you have route, so it would be more complicated to do it, but I just, I still think it, it's a valid point if we could get there somehow with the remote read, read meters or whatever, because it's a burden on the same people, and I know, you know, we get some revenue from it, but I don't think that's what we're in the business for, is to live on late fees, and we don't want to live on somebody's, you know, they can't pay their bill for five days and they end up paying thirty-five bucks every month or whatever. So, I don't know, that's all I wanted to say about it.
Well, and the, the senior citizens that do qualify for the senior citizen discount, that qualify for the senior citizen discount, they do not get a penalty, but that is a household income of fifteen thousand or less, and so that is, that is just about, it's just social security, so that, that fifteen thousand does put a limit. Um, and just if, just for, for your general information, I did not put this in my report, um, but we budget a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for penalties, and that's for all penalties on the utility business, so, just, just so you're aware of that. Um, I did have a good follow-up meeting with G Dodd about the remote crossings, uh, what they are working on is, um, the, the requirement in the consent order, and you will see there that what they're, the, the design that they are looking at, it will go from the curb at Adams Street to, um, just beyond Railroad Avenue on the east side. So hopefully in their design of this, this is going to greatly lessen, if not completely eliminate, the bad hump that is in, uh, Tew College. As I talked to them about, um, the fact that we had looked at a couple of years ago and had a contractor that we, we wanted to, um, coordinate with them to, um, correct the, the crossing there, and they said that they did not feel that that was going to be, that they would be correcting that in the design of, uh, everything that they're changing there and putting in the, um, signal. Uh, you'll see that, uh, I have with the regional commission, we're working on phase one of the annexation, uh, making some changes to the job descriptions, personnel manuals. Um, but one thing that I do want to point out is that we did not receive enough surveys to either move forward with an application next year. I think some of, uh, some of our citizens are concerned about having to provide a range for their, uh, annual income. Uh, this is not information that is passed on to anyone, we do not ask for their exact income, it's listed on there as ranges, but because it's state, federal money, um, we have to have low moderate income levels in order for that to qualify. So what we want to continue to do is continue those, um, those households that did not submit, we want to continue to, uh, contact them, and we are adding Union Hill Drive to the area so that we will have a better understanding of the low moderate income level for all of that area, and we'll continue to look at Sunset, Brookwood, and Union Hill to see if we can do any or all of that for an application for next year. Uh, the only other thing that is, is a big concern is the, um, concrete pad at the Fire Bay, I hope that you saw there where that is crumbling, we'll be putting out a RFP to get that replaced, we'll have to do that in two separate, um, stages so that we can get the fire trucks in and out, uh, but we will be sending out an RFP for that. And the items that will be coming before you, April the nineteenth, we have a rezoning and a conditional use for four ninety-five holiday circle, going from residential multifamily to highway business. Also on the nineteenth is a conditional use for Swin's candy, so that they can, for Also on the nineteenth is a conditional use for Smith Candy, so that they can have a manufacturing food processing in the industrial park. We have a beer wine and liquor package license that will come before you, and that is for one of the out parcels that will be there at the new Valero. And then on May the third, we have an annexation with zoning from FJNH and Timber Assets for 591.14 acres that is located above Smith Road, on Smith Road, above Johnsonville Road, Rock Creek Road. And the last thing that's there is you were in for when Denise Spud came and did her report for the Artisan Guild. The last thing that she mentioned to you was wanting signage, and she had this picture there when we met with Denise. And what we would like to do is, instead of putting it in the blue area above and make it look like that that is the name of the entire building, and that she and I talking that may be where there's the side, the Artisan Guild is on, and then the column that is there in the middle, if they have that sign created and hang that from the, you'll see in the area that I put the white block, that's where she would like to hang that sign if no one has any opposition to that. I'll let her know that she can move forward with that, but since that is a city building, I want to get your permission for her to be able to do that. It does fit within the zoning requirement, but we want to make sure that nobody has any problems with that.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Dodd, simultaneous with by Councilman Hewitt. We'll call that in a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimous. All right, anything else?
Motion.
All right, any questions for the city manager? Yes, Councilman Howard.
I was just, I was asked a question, I know it makes you know the improvement on Black Hill, and I was asked a question as to whether there's going to carry over on Route Willis-Lawler Drive, I guess, going up towards Freeman Avenue, the area, whatever. I told her what your, what exactly was going to be done up there. Do you know about that, okay?
I don't think Willis-Lawler is included in that, but I'll double check and make sure. But a portion of Freeman should have been. But we have a meeting with them on Wednesday to talk about their progress or the lack thereof on that project. They are supposed to be finished with that project by the end of April, and it does not look like they go into, and the work that they're doing on those road cuts is not, not up to par. But I will look at, I'll look and see if Willis-Lawler is in there, and I'll send you any mail, let you know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, so, I mean, is there any reason why Willis-Lawler would not be included in there? I'd be right off.
Other than, other than the fact that when that application was submitted, that it was just submitted for those streets down Black Hill, that that's the only, it just wasn't included in that area.
Okay.
It will be, it should be a future area that we can look at for CPG.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Hewitt?
I had a couple of folks around Square ask me, Janice, that on traffic court days, when they have it up there, they won't let them into, let the folks into courthouse to use restroom.
Do we have traffic court? County does, but we don't.
County probate court.
County probate's not us.
That's what we have, ours out of the justice.
That's what I thought, and I said, as far as I know, unless there's been a problem, ours is elsewhere.
Yeah.
But they don't have anywhere to go back. And like, I told them, I don't know what we use, what we do about it.
They don't let people into the courtroom?
They will let them in courthouse. They give them a number, they give them their phone number, they go sit in the.
Oh, because of COVID, they have to wait outside.
And I said, the only public place would be the visitors. I said, you know, it's not really public.
Well, it's restroom. Hell, they should.
So if it's not, if it's not us, I won't worry about it.
It's not us, it's probably important to be.
Well, that's what they're doing. They're calling back on their phone, telling them to come inside.
So they won't let them come in at the meantime and use the restroom if they try? They turn them in?
I didn't think that was quite kosher, since you probably think they'd get a good finance, most of them.
Yeah, I would tell them I was coming for some other business.
Personal business.
All right, yeah, personal business. All right, anything else for the city manager? Hearing nothing, we'll move along with the city attorney report.
All right, the things that Ms. Hall mentioned coming up, three things on the nineteenth, the rezoning for 495 Holiday Circle, and with the conditional use there, the Prince Candy's conditional use in the industrial park, their manufacturing process, the alcohol license of 291 North East Street in the Leroy Center. As well as the one on May three, the annexation of zoning for 591 acres. I think I've sent everybody an advanced copy of the legal ads on those, and in the case of the two that are ordinances, I've sent the ordinances out also. I want to start doing that, so you'll have these things ahead of time. Everybody get those?
I did.
I don't want to overwhelm you, but I'd like for you to know about these things before you come to a council meeting or see the agenda.
Did everybody receive those?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I did.
That's going to be my policy from now on, just advance, let everybody send those things out. I sent an ad to the reporter, I'm going to copy that on council members as well, Janice.
All right.
That is it. So, I call, is it up for the Valero?
It's in the, in the complex, there's a package store.
It's, Valero is, they will have here and line in the convenience store, but this will be a separate building, as you're facing the building, it's going to be on the right, that will be a liquor package store.
It's part of that complex, it's not part of, not part of the service station, issue.
Will that be three out of our four or four out of our four? Three. Okay. All right. Any other questions for the city attorney?
I don't have anything else.
I got a question, Bobby. When someone applies for a beer, wine, liquor pouring license, as part of that process, does a business have to have already changed hands or the property changed hands when they do that? Or?
They could be leasing the property.
If I was going to buy a restaurant in town, would I have to have already bought the restaurant to then go change the license, or do you do it before you actually purchase the restaurant?
You do it when you anticipate the change is going to happen, because, first, because they've already got a license there, they probably want to keep that till the day that you, that the new person takes over. It's kind of a scheduling, that's one of my guests. Could, see, there could be a period in there of a week, maybe, where somebody's selling something when they don't, nobody has a license for them.
Right, no, I got, okay.
It's just a scheduling kind of thing.
So if their timing is right, they can go ahead and apply before that, and we acquire the business or the property, or lease the property.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the city attorney? Not, I have nothing to add at this point, so we'll go on to the council board reports. Any board reports from the council? All right.
Just one, one thing, the region committee, our region commission meeting will be Thursday, it'll be virtually going, be zooming in, be assigned Saturday, Thursday.
That's right.
All of it, so that's all the things, great, great to read.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor pro tem. Thank you. All right, anybody else have anything? Board reports, all right? If not, any additional business? Any additional business from the council?
I've got one thing there.
Go ahead.
I know it's a late hour, but I was going to bring this up anyway tonight, and I think two of the things that were on the agenda actually played into, it even makes more sense to bring it up. You know, I've got a really big concern. Forsyth is growing, we've got lots of things going on, we've got people coming here. I heard today in Columbus and Valdosta, there's two, two developers coming into this community, and there are others looking at property, looking at opportunities, which I think is awesome. I'm just a little bit concerned that we already have zoning in place for R1, R2, or whatever it may be, that we really have no way of, and I don't even know how to say control growth, because I don't mean controlling the growth. I think you've got to have a way of managing, to manage the growth. Because if we let developers come in here and build, you know, five thousand, you know, $270,000 houses, then what have we accomplished, right? What have we done? I think we need a whole, like I said earlier, a whole stroke of housing from, you know, low-income housing to duplexes, to single families, to starting out families. And I really don't know how to manage that. I only bring it up for us to think about, but I think we're moving at a very fast pace. I think lots of eyeballs are on Monroe County and Forsyth. So I'm, I don't know what the solution might be, or guidance that we might be. I think maybe someone to help us with maybe some master planning. I think tonight is a great example with this apartment complex discussion, that we need affordable apartments. The wrong location was identified by the developer, but I think had he come to us first, or if a person came to us, we could give them some ideas of where you think it would work.
But I think their contention was that was the only response.
Well, I would argue that's.
Because of the census tract. They had to.
They put too much emphasis on that.
I think there are plenty of other places.
The idol.
Didn't probably work out.
I think that's what they want to piss us head with, was this is the only place we could put it.
Oh, yeah.
But that's not so.
I just think we need to be, we need to help the growth, but I think we need to manage the growth, because if we don't manage the growth, then we've seen the growth north of here in other counties, and they let it go crazy. Now people are vacating those areas for reasons that we love living here, right? If we're not careful, a year from now, they're going to sit back and say, what have we done? You know, we're having houses built, housing permits are, you know, you read the paper, there's so many in there every single week. So I don't know if it's a function of the housing board, that we give them some direction on how to manage it. I don't know if it's something that you, mayor, put together ad hoc committee to get some, some help with. I don't know if we hire a third party, somebody to help us with maybe some big picture programming to identify some areas. I don't know what the answer is. I'm concerned.
I think, if you get the RDC, somebody from University of Georgia, get involved and give us some direction on it.
That may take a year. We don't got a year. This stuff's happening today. My train has left the station.
This is actually, that's actually a function of land planning itself. And that's why I say that's one of the most important committees that the city has to report to. We need to.
What he's saying is, the property is already zoned, R1 or R3 or whatever, so there's nothing that would prohibit somebody from developing. So I think then you're talking more about a moratorium or something, because the rules are already in place. He's talking about something to slow down what's happening, I think. Is that what you're saying?
I think it's managed. I mean, for a developer to come here and have already presented a project, he's going to build X number of houses, when he knew good and well, day one, you had to put sidewalks in there, he made the lots according to that, because he wasn't, the lots are too small because he wants to maximize his investment in that neighborhood, which I understand that. But at the end of the day, he knew what the parameter was, then he comes here after fifty houses that are built, wants to take sidewalks out.
But this stored a month ago while that was sending approved eighty more lots for that same building.
I understand, but he was supposed to put sidewalks in there.
So without, they approved it with only one sidewalk.
They weeded.
We did.
But what concerns me, and I hear you, mayor, is that that's just one developer, right? There's a lot of other land available out there that people are letting go right now because the price of land is really expensive. I mean, they're getting a good price for their land. So if we're going to be having these same discussions and these same.
You're going to have one in about six months.
Things going on every single meeting that we have, and if we don't, if we just let it happen, then we're no different than the communities that are failed, is my point. So I just bring it up for, I don't know what the answer is, but I was going to bring it up tonight anyway before these two agenda items were even on there. But I think both of those play into exactly what I'm talking about.
I guess my question is, if somebody wanted to develop in an area that was zoned for that type of development, they don't have to go to temp manning zone or the city council, so how would you manage that development?
Well, I think this day.
What input would you have?
You manage the building permits. You only do X number of building permits for a certain size structure, right? You say, we're only going to do 150, $100,000 homes, or we're only going to do 200 whatever size homes, right? So that now the onus is on the developers to figure out, okay, well, I can go to Forsyth and get some land for X number per acre, and instead of being able to, you know, put 50 houses in there, I may be able to put 25 in there. Is that worth my investment to do that? And none of this conversation is to slow down growth. I think the growth is awesome. I think it's, it's what we've all been waiting for. I just want us to be careful that we do it correctly, and that's all, no mistake, and I don't know how to do that.
Well, I agree with, but for a long time, people have said, city council keeps things from happening. I think we all know that none of us keep things from happening. We want things to happen. So, and if you, and if you want commercial growth, you've got to have residential. You and I talked about this last week, and people all say they want an outback or a this or that, and you don't get those without having people live here. So our expectations have to be realistic at some point.
They, they want numbers of behinds and seats.
Exactly.
And those numbers are there now, right? Because we're getting the national retail that we didn't get two years ago.
I would think so.
Right? And a lot of it's because if you go there, I'm going there, right? If you're going to build your restaurant, okay, you may not meet my criteria, and I'm going to go there because you're there, right?
Right, and that's a way to allow them.
And I'm not, and I'm not questioning you exactly, I'm just trying to work it out in my mind, how we do it. Because I, I mean, I agree with you. I think we all have an ideal in mind, but.
All right, Janice, who issues with the building permits?
City, county building permit.
City, county building permit.
We contract.
Yeah. See, that, and we don't have control. I was trying to say, I was going to say, do we have control? We have input, so we can't tell them.
Well, okay, we do have input, because if you want to do, if you want to build, if you want to build a, whatever you're going to build, we issue a zoning compliance, and in order for a building permit to be issued, they have to have a zoning compliance. So, in, in that aspect, yes, we have input, but if you have, if you have someone that's building a new building, that would go before design review for it to be looked at, but as, as the mayor said, that if it's zoned appropriately, and what they're, everything they're going to do fits in that location, the only thing that is done is designer review looks at it, and designer review is recommending, so probably is an approval, so it does not come before you a recommendation. Mr. Strach sent out a similar email over the weekend, I think. And, and my response back to him was that that was a very timely, something that he brought up, because in my meeting last week with the regional commission, we talked about the comp plan, which is a city alone, city Forsyth, and minor county plan. I think some of the issue before is that it's been stressed that there are steering committees that handle those, and then it comes back and goes to boards for adoption. So I don't think that the elected officials have ever been as included in the comp plan as you really should be now, because DCA is looking at all of these, the plan first, and so many of the other projects that they award, that they look at your comp plan and see what you do with your comp plan. The comp plan that we're currently working under was worked on in 2015, 2016, was adopted in 2017. So you think about the things that were going on in 15, 16, and that's the things that are in the comp plan. Housing is in the comp plan, and it's discussed that the amount of housing that we, that goes along with that, if for no reason, we can't start working on that now. To get Carl Vincent here, you're absolutely right, it would take at least a year to get Carl Vincent. We could probably get the regional commission to come and start working with us to sit down. They may have some suggestion as, as a third party can bring in, to sit down and start talking about, especially if you're just looking at housing. But the rest of the comp plan is not just housing, it includes transportation and infrastructure and everything. So I mean, we can, we can certainly start looking at that. Um, the other part of that is make sure that as, I'm sorry, Mr. Strach, as, as we're talking about this annexation, we're moving forward with this annexation plan that, that you guys broke up into four phases. By the end of May, we will be sending out the letters for phase one. So that's, that's another thing to consider in your, your growth and everything that, that will be taking place. It's, it's as you annex, there's going to be a lot of property that's going to be coming into the city, that will be using city services, that we need to make sure that we're taking care of those as well.
And, and some of that already has, has on, you know, that.
Some of it does, but then that was another reason for, for us adding the agricultural, because a lot of it is, is going to be undeveloped as we, as we move around the outside outskirts of the city and it. And I interrupted Mr. Strach, because he was saying something.
Oh, no, that, that is fine, hey, I, I, I think all of us up there, Mr. Mayor, when you first took over, we all went to Atlanta, we sat in a room with E C G, well, E N C usually, different acronym, with E M C, with Darren England specifically. And the charge that we had was, who are we? Define who we are, what do we do, what, what do we do of that? Um, I think we did a quadrant, and we said, these things is, is what we want in our fourth quadrant. If you're still thinking in a quadrant, then you don't fit, not really, not, not really a good fit for the city Forsyth. Only adding that if we don't lose sight, uh, that means we all invested our time and our resources for one of them needs. I don't think that Greg is only, and if I'm wrong by saying this, I don't think Greg is only talking about residential. If I'm, if, if, if I can take a guess, I think Greg is saying, the city of Forsyth as whole, whether it relates to commercials, residential, anything else, when we talk about the planning of the city, you know, we, I, I do think that we need to pump the pump, make it pump the brakes, but we can't pump the brakes like Brad said, because the train has already left the station. So, yeah, we, we definitely, you know, we definitely need to make sure that we, we're doing the right thing with gosh, our vision. I don't know what the right action is, but I do know that we all sat down, for the most part, with Mr. Darren England, and it was a very productive meeting, let's not lose sight of who we are.
Thank you. All good points, but ultimately, how do you control somebody's rights due to their property, unless you do it through zoning? And if it's zoned for something, you can't say you can't do anything on your property, because we just don't want to do anything. You gotta, you gotta allow them to be able to utilize the property they've invested in, or paying taxes for, for some purpose. But you can't just say, you know, you can't use your property, you have to, and I think the way a city does that is through zoning. Can't zone it for nothing, you have to zone it for something.
Yeah.
Residential.
Which we're.
Highway business, it's got to be something.
If it's already R one.
But that's, that's what the city has in its collective business, decided is appropriate for that area. And if I'm the property owner that buys that property that's in R one, and I think, well, I'm going to put it in R one, and you come along and say, no, we, we, we think we're growing too fast, you can't put us up with anything. And I say, well, I think I got a business plan, because I could build houses and people would rent them. But no, you can't do that, and so, I don't know, it's a touchy.
It is.
I mean, I get the points, I know what y'all are saying, and, and I understand. But it's just, how does the city, I've always said, we can't take water as a loser, we just create an environment. We, we provide water, sewer, fire, and those services that make an environment for things to happen. That's really what I see a city doing, and apparently we've done a pretty good job of providing the environment.
And maybe all we can do, mayor, is, I totally agree with everything you just said, because it is a frustrating topic. Maybe one way to address it would be like the one, the one Forsyth. One Forsyth. What? Whatever, where the, you know, a business owner comes here, meets with all the, it's one Forsyth, right?
First step.
First step. So maybe one idea would be, we could say, okay, we want all developments, because you can't change the zoning. The zoning, I think, is, is, has been done fairly, and I think the zoning fits what we need and what our needs are. But maybe carrying that one step a little further to say, okay, if someone comes in to, before they go to planning zoning, maybe that's the trigger. I don't know where the trigger is, then they come and meet, and they hear from Tammy, or whomever, to say, okay, I hear what your project is, but I'm just telling you, here's things that we know that are needs, or, or, or things that, that we need to fulfill, whether you're willing to do it or not, that they may not even know about, you know what I mean? Maybe it's a conversation, for instance, the, the apartment guy, I think had he done that, I, I get the data he was trying to show us, that that was the only place to put it, I, I beg to differ, that if he had looked at four or five parcels that could have been, you know, potentially used for that, I think it might have been a different conversation. And, and maybe that's the only way we manage it, is having some input on the front end. Ultimately, the developer is going to do what he wants to do, it's his money, it's his investment in this community. Maybe we give them some information on the front end, to kind of help fulfill some of the needs that we know we have.
But that, that, that process worked in the case of tonight. So he came, and y'all saw that it was not a good fit, and he didn't, because it required a.
I know, had he come two months ago, and he started thinking about doing this, had he come and listened and said, and he proposed that property as well as maybe heard about a property he hadn't even thought about. He may have said, you know what, I think it'd fit better over here, you're going to have a hard time getting that, because it's not a good location. And maybe it's just the conversation on the front end that helps drive it, I, I don't know, it's.
We do that at first step, it just didn't work in this part. When, when you have somebody that says, I have this piece of property, and I'm going to put this on here, then all we can do as, as the department head is to say, okay, if these services are available there, they're not, you know. There, there have been times that that has worked, but first step, it just didn't work this time, because he did, um, and it's probably been two months ago.
But he didn't have that property, he came with that property in mind, he hadn't bought that property.
No, he hasn't, no, he locked it.
He was locked in today, and I think had he heard, again, what you're saying, Janice, he came in thinking, I want to do this project, here's the A's, B's, and C's. But had he come in and said, I want to do this project Forsyth, here's what I'm thinking, what do you guys think? What do you think, Tammy, what do you think this is a good location? She says, no, well, maybe, but here's a couple other locations. Or a developer comes in and says, I'm going to build X number of houses, and the same, it's already zoned for that. Maybe just a conversation on the front end, say, well, we're really hearing that we need X, or Y, whatever that is.
You know why.
It may change their, it may change their thought process.
On that location, with that little triangle, because he, he would, he'd get so many points for his property to be close to this, close to that, so many miles from this, and I mean, and the more points he gets, the, the easier the process is with DCA, and so.
The more likely he is to win.
You're right.
This is contest, who gets most of all.
And, and the other thing about it is, just because it's Smith, don't mean they're going to approve it. And if they don't approve it, he's going to come to it.
There's other places on the front end, where that could be a better.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
That thing.
Right.
It's part of that.
They want to take another, end up for parking.
And I'm sorry, man, I know it's late, everybody's ready to go, I, I just don't want us two years from now to sit back and think, what in the world is real life just happening, right? Roads are all jammed up, can't get nowhere, the schools, we've got trailers between here and the high schools, we can't, you know, get everybody educated. Trying to figure out how to pay for all the services.
I think those are very legitimate questions, and I think, uh, how we plan our infrastructure is, is definitely a function of this council, and something that we, is our responsibility to be doing.
We're doing that.
To figure out, well, I'm talking about to figure out traffic, to figure out things as the city grows, because you're right, those are, those are the things that are, those are issues that are increasing, rising to the surface more and more.
Well, you know, you can't do some of this without the other, you know.
It's a chicken and the egg, hey, Janice, if I'm a developer, can I buy a hundred acres over here from Joe Blow, and I want to build a subdivision? Do I come to the first one Forsyth for work?
Anytime anybody wants to, any develop, any new business.
But you don't have to, you said, do you come, but you don't, it's not a requirement, it's all.
Maybe, maybe it should make them.
And sometimes they, they don't know.
No, they're, they're.
I know, but because they.
If they don't get a permit.
The way this was all created, this decides a type of zoning, which is economic development, that Tammy handles. Permits, any zoning compliance, any variance, all of that goes through one person, that's the way it was all created, so that it is that one person that everything's following through. The only time that something would not come to the first step is if there's a vacant building on the square, and they're moving into that, and they're not doing any change, that those, that those would not come to first step. But if they're doing, um, any building, all new subdivisions, all new construction goes before first step.
And maybe at this stage, that's our only opportunity to have a conversation, maybe that's all it is. I just know if I'm a developer from Valdosta, and I look, I find some property up here, and I buy it, and I come up here, I don't know all the ins and outs of Forsyth, and what the real needs are, I know what I want to do, I want to make the most money I can off that investment. Sometimes they haven't even thought about what potentially that could be, because they're thinking one way, maybe just a conversation helps them think a different way, so maybe that's all.
Well, and part of that may be us giving Tammy some better instruction through a strategic planning for economic development, because in absence of our instruction, she's probably just working to bring things here.
Sure.
That's her job, economic development, so if you, you know, if there's something specific, specific direction this council wants her to work, then that's, uh, obviously good. All right, let's move along, anything else, is that good, good?
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got something, I'm sorry, I was trying to, I'm going to be real quick.
All right.
Hey, um, I did, I did feature, um, this one lady, and I just want to make sure that I bring it up in the public session. Um, talking to Ms. Gloria Colvin, who's in A Court, um, Ms. Hall and, uh, Mr. Mayor, we spoke about this briefly off the main. Hey, gentlemen, I encouraged us to fly over to Janae Court, which is, um, on the other side of Grand Hill. Now, I tell you what she's saying about the roads over there, uh, they, they, they are poor at best. And Janae Court itself looks like they poured some rice krispy sweet in a hole, and slapped some patchwork on it, it's really bad over there. And she told me that that was the improvement, because it was worse than that. So I did talk to, I, I, I went over there to see it, and it was, it was, it was pretty bad. Second thing, um, Mr. Hewitt, if we can get to get on a hold line, and Ms. Hall can give it to you. Um, Mr. Rodney Pitts, over in Forsyth Guard, I also talked to someone, um, who's under housing authority, um, baked about utility, not utility, about, um, how much they're paying for rent, or whatever the tax may be. I told them definitely not the guy to talk to, but I can kind of maybe pass them on to you. You may not have the answer either, but you may have gotten a good direction, I can, other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, anybody else with additional business? If not, we'll move on to public comments, anyone that's stuck around this long and wants to say anything. They can come forward at this time, please state your name and address for the record, and you may comment for up to four minutes, anytime you wish to do so. Anybody? Anybody? All right, see, a lack of interest in public participation tonight, we'll move on to the executive session. I'm not aware that we need one, do we need one? Tell me we don't need one. All right, Ms. Hall says we don't need one. There's one motion that is entirely in order at this time. Have a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor?
Leave.
Let the little leave button, all right, y'all have a good night, thank you.